Can can deal with right now. Maybe it's something you'd like to do in the future. Lydon, who is who is on? We got Tracy over there. Good. Tracy's on. Thank you for being here, Tracy. I know you've got company right now, so appreciate it. Chris John is on.
Oh. It doesn't need to restart. I'm gonna go ahead and select a time to restart and hopefully it'll.
Stay with this.
What's going on?
Oh.
I'm just like. Too much chaos. Yeah.
Thank you. I love it. I enjoy it. Highlights. Yeah. Yeah. They never put me in. Over the years, so I have a couple of times. So I was glad to do it this way. Yeah. I did not receive my.
You guys have events made at the Eagles. You guys are having some big events at the Eagles, looks like.
This was some. This is. Probably why. Probably put it in my inbox. My my I I deleted it.
Have you guys got your uh your agendas back at top? Back, did you?
Good. I'll be there. I'll be in a second.
In Christian's way. Okay. Uh it is six oh three minute, six oh three. I call the city council meeting of July nineteenth, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two to work. Please say. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Larissa. Oh, can I remember her? I can't hear.
Yes, and then what happens? I'm present.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Grant. Present. Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
Mayor Proton Green.
Here.
Mayor Lobby.
Here. Oh, thank you. At this time, our last approval of the agenda is only on the agenda. We feel like we need to change. Okay, hearing done, I would entertain motion.
No moves to approve the agenda. For just seconds.
Any other discussion? If they were to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Uh next up, we have the oath of office for new city council member. Some.
Get ready. Thank you.
Okay.
Looking after me. Hi, Shannon Grant. Hi, Shannon Grant. Do Solomon Square by the level of God. Do Solomon Square by the level of God. And I will support the Constitution of the United States, but I support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of state power, the Constitution of state power, and the municipal government, city of capital. And the municipal capital, city of capital. And faithfully perform the duties of local city councilor. And faithfully perform the duties of city councilor, among which I am a citizen. Chartered out in term. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah. I thought he did that score.
It's good.
Fifty words was crucial.
Did you? Justice.
Was that? Okay, this time has things in there. If anybody in the city council, if anything is likely to uh speak to us about before we get started. Um see, nothing Tracy, nothing from there. Anybody else?
I have something. Uh I did go up to uh Alder and to see where that went. And uh it appears that there was some good work being done. It looks like the new cover was placed in there, but there's still water over top in the road and seemed that those some of those um houses were still being affected by water coming down the street. And one thing I did notice is that uh there isn't really a retention pond or detention pond or detention area or any sort of detainment area where the water comes in, it it flows down the it would be the the south side of the street, the right side goes around and then the ditch just ends abruptly, fills up and then overtops and goes onto the water. I also noticed that there was some uh just two um silt socks that were placed on the left hand side pretty well spaced out. And from a lot of the construction management I've done in the past, I would have to say that if there isn't any possibility to increase the ditch, maybe even get the water across the street and increase the amount of silt socks, you know, those sandbags to return the 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 water so it doesn't rush down and create any erosion concerns and maybe could distribute evenly. Um perhaps that can help. I don't know if we received any additional uh pleas of help from those individuals, but I do think that there could be some additional approvals.
There's been no communication. However, we'll tell you in deal with street department, uh they intend to put detention ponds like storms who are detention ponds on either side of the culvert.
Yep.
Uh and what they want to do, and this is problematic because the uh that person, that family doesn't want us to do it, but we we need to cut a ditch line. There there are houses that there's their houses in the second street. There's another house on the left. The house on the left uh has flooded in the past. And so what we need to do is kind of ditch line between those two houses right down the middle and that's sitting property. She doesn't want us to use any mechanical anything mechanical. So uh you know, but just so you know what the intent is. Another thing is we intend to, we hope to pave second street in the next week. And not only are we going to pave it, but we're going to put it, we'll all call them pans or squares on each side of the street, but the asphalt all the way down. So so the water, we can direct the water into the right place. Now, it's a steep hill. You know, I'm I'm not sure how much these mitigation efforts will help, but that's just so you know.
Okay.
Okay, and we will cut that ditch.
Yeah, it'd be great. Yeah.
You'll hear about it when we do. That's all.
Yeah, some more sediment basins or sediment ponds would work out as you as you said. I mean, I know it looked as I went up there right after a recent storm. It definitely looked like somebody was up there recently that put that improvements in. So really happy that the street department did some of that, but you know, it's it looks like it's a work in progress. I'm glad there's more work in progress going on.
That's the whole city.
I'm going in with this well. Early afternoon the next day and it'll probably be cleaned up. Right there.
Right. And and we're working in a lot of other parts of town over at uh Fourth and and uh Lydon or Fourth and James, uh we're cleaning out that hitch line again. It's a big ditch line. It's a major pathway for water in that part of town. So we have to keep clearing the ditches because they, you know, these storms have filled them up. Uh we're also working up on on West Seven where our house is put in and putting in a concrete pan. They they got to be ready today. If they're gonna pour concrete tomorrow. There are projects around town uh would just take an enormous amount of time and effort. Yeah, I feel like, you know, as a city or as a street department, we're doing what we can and what we know how to do uh to help wherever we possibly care. So.
Great rain that we've been receiving. That's been welcome.
Rain's great when you get a little bit every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I I had a very nice rain last night. Anybody else uh in the house speaking at it? I have a few things I'd like to mention real quick. Uh we had a really interesting film last night in freight. Uh and this dealt with mobile home parks throughout the nation. Uh but some of the focus was on on uh one little old park that was particularly problematic in Colorado, which ended up being closed uh because the landowner was purchased by an investment group. The landowner just said, no, we're we're closing off the park. And uh thi- this can happen anywhere and everywhere uh in terms of of when mobile home parks become investment parks. So uh it gets a it's a cautionary tale. I think we're a little bit ahead of the curve in Colorado, but uh there's a lot more work to be done. I want to let everybody know about July the thirty first, which is soon. Uh the Tabor House is going to have a little event and it's gonna be uh they're gonna have like different organizations, the table outside the city, the table. And I understand from Chief D, the fire department's gonna have a little table. And so anybody in the city and the house, he's gonna be on the table. So.
Right. Do I get that one? I'm gonna I'm gonna I'm gonna man it. I'm gonna put a little sign there that says the Shell answer that.
We're gonna put your phone up on the side. Anyway, we're gonna we're gonna have a table out there and anybody who wants to participate, that's what it'll be twelve to on the side of the table. What was St. Louis Avenue is now vacated. And then they're gonna have an event inside uh that afternoon at two o'clock. So just so everybody knows what what's going on there. Uh I wanted to tell you that the dedication of the Crossroads Trail took place last Thursday. Um and I've been talking about before that is a there were quite a few people out there that are dedicated. It's a it's a pretty big key uh deal in terms of of completing the staged rail trail, uh which will take years to complete, but but a lot of it's in place. Um the the excavation at the visitor center for the bathroom will start tomorrow morning about nine o'clock. Um it's just a piece of that of progress in um in that whole um project. Uh pedal for the park at the time of Saturday. Uh some people shouldn't have been out there. We're out there. Who couldn't possibly be talking about me, a twenty year old's bicycle. But nonetheless, they raised thirty two thousand dollars for a new park. Uh the new park is going to be a a pump track uh there, which is adjacent to the bar off of Fourth Street. Uh and it's gonna be a paved, partially paved, partially dirt uh bicycle track out there. And they're well oriented. That that was pretty cool. Last thing I would say, this is uh Judge Floyd. I spoke with prosecutor uh this last week. Uh and we're we're clearly adamant about what we expect of our prosecutor in terms of of our animal, especially our vicious animal. Our prosecutor was not only willing, but he 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 was enthusiastic about applying uh to people um who who were problematic. So very good. Um that's a very nothing happened.
One more. I just remembered the uh the music in the park.
Oh, yeah.
My event besides was lovely.
Yeah. The next one we always support. I agree. That was such a nice thing. Okay, anybody else? Great, thank you. Uh at this time, uh we would love to hear from the public. Anybody in the public would like to make uh to speak to city council on items not on the agenda? Uh please let us know and come and speak, guys. Ron.
Hello. My name is around the course at eleven thirteen. Thirty all. Just I'm trying to uh who is behind all the dive in parking that happened down on the suspicion.
Okay. Well, city council approved it about two years ago.
Okay, so was any put any thought put into about how wide the street is and having a forty five degree angle versus a say a thirty degree angle for parking due to the street being so narrow and only pretty much one lane? And now I think you guys should rethink it because seriously, I watched the post up the mail truck. You had to go all the way to the northbound lane to make the turn. And when winter comes, you guys are gonna have a problem there. I mean, I think I think you gave me three parking spaces, really? Did you really think about that? I mean, because the sheriff's department is now parked up. You know, they have their own lot, parking their lot. Yeah. So you really didn't gain much. And and I think it's created more of an attitude. Then I have another question. I see that you got an independent contractor, which is Jimmy Snyder. I want to know if he actually has a WC forty five uh or a WC forty three. And he has a independent contractor that shows. And why he would drive a city truck versus his own personal vehicle, independent contract. That's what.
Uh we can we can find out the answer to those questions as follows. You. I I would also say that uh you you you're one of the happiness people who. Wow, we're still there. Okay.
That was quick.
Oh, I guess we are.
Thank you, council. I have a personal thing I would like to talk about and a professional thing. So personal hat on right now. Um I spoke to the V O C C today about some concerns I have with the sheriff's department and some um perhaps some things that they have done recently that could cause harm in our community goes around trauma and race. And I recommended to them that they require the sheriff's department to take anti racism or diversity equity and inclusion training specific for law enforcement. The reason I'm talking to you guys about this is because I think that it makes sense to do it for both the police and the sheriff's department at the same time. But uh we can find a consultant to do for it. So I just wanted to mention that might be a dietary consideration for you guys to think about. And then professional hat on. Um the planning and zoning commission decided they did not want to move forward with the path recommendations, which just hurtens me a lot. We made those recommendations almost a year and a half ago. Um they would be a qualifying strategy for the incentive grant. And to me, it seems like planning and zoning values recommendations of people who are from outside of our community more so than the people, the community members who are dedicated to this work and spent six months vetting a recommendation that both city council and planning and zoning had originally said you wanted to move forward with. What I heard them say their concerns were was about capacity. But from my understanding, planning and zoning had approved it, city council had approved it. So the capacity is really now to be honest, she needs to do some work on it and then set up the first reading and secondary. So I'm not quite sure what the capacity should live on planning and zoning. And I just wanted to say that I'm disappointed by that decision.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Chief, uh it is more than my understanding that diversity training is a requirement, a yearly requirement in in police departments. Is that is that a misunderstanding in that regard?
I'd have to look into that to give you the definitive answer. I know that Jeremiah Johnson, who works at C M C, actually provides that type of training. So there is a vendor locally that that we wouldn't have to go bring somebody from out of state to do that.
Just something that I have. It seems like, you know, I was told at some point in time in, I don't know if it's true.
I can look I I can look into it and let you know.
Yeah, thank you. Secondly, I'll say this in council is uh these these are policy wise recommendations that have been in front of us all the time. And especially as it relates to the calculation density. There are huge step forward, you know, in terms of how we currently can be planning and how we can play in the future. And 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 uh so I'm still in favor of going forward with policy laser team recommendations, which we've we've lived through the process of planning and zoning and we are now ready to go uh to to see in order. That's my my understanding, right?
Just microphone? Yeah, yes, that's correct. I I I understand the the frustration and I think tracking where we are right now, I do know that Christiana does have them for review and I can double check and see when we've or if we've put them on an upcoming agenda. That usually incentivizes us to keep moving on it. So.
I thought we also weren't maybe have those done by September first, but I think if you confusing those with with some of the also the objectives of the of the category of mission and what what uh changes they need is qualifying.
Yeah, I I but I'm I don't. We'll find out if September's unrealistic. It may it may may not. It may not be that all may be realistic.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public would like to speak?
My name is Tim Bergman. I serve as the Lake County manager. I'm here to provide an update on our summer of vandalism. Uh Lake County's maintenance crew is well over five thousand dollars in labor and about three thousand dollars in materials for cleaning up graffiti and repairing uh vandalism on the various parts of facilities. The one that is now being hit into newly now is the skate park. Um last uh not the past weekend, the weekend before, it was tagged after the um Friday evening skate uh classes by the direct department that next morning. Parents who were just at the um skate class, but the direct department know that there was a lot, I mean, a lot of tagging uh done at the skate park, a lot of seen inappropriate things. Uh so maintenance spent two days cleaning that and then the next night uh it was uh tagged back. Also, that Ice Palace part of the stall uh dividers were ripped out, ripped out. Um so you've done that for a while. There's no window. Sorry, but anyway, that is the update that I wanted to bring to council.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman.
Any leads on who who it is or do you think it's separate people?
Uh we have, thanks to the police department, we have um apprehended one perpetrator who is um being punished. As unfortunately, it's their family. Uh and then uh no, I don't have any other leads. At the skate park, uh there's the power only goes to the end of the ice skating rink, so I don't have any cameras there. There's not really a good place to put um game cameras or hunting cameras there. That's when they would see and also vandalize or steal. Um so we're working on solutions there. But again, that's an additional cost on adding on cameras to that facility. Um and then also I've been willing a reward of some kind from the county if the city wants to trip in on identifying people.
Did the excuse me?
Good.
Did the Ice Palace game cameras pick up anything? Because that's what gave us the lead to apprehend those other those other kids.
Um not that I not that uh wreck or maintenance is able to find. But then again, every time when there is something that I have to spend my staff, I spend time looking through all that.
Well, if if you if you want, if you wanted to provide my civilian staff some training, you can help help you out with that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to provide? Public comment. I don't know if it's on the agenda. Anybody up on Zoom? Would like to speak to city council? I couldn't tell. Jane, did you get rid your hair?
No, mayor, I didn't. But thank you for asking.
Okay, in that case, we'll move on. Uh this time, we have the approval of three sets of minutes. Uh the first ones for June twenty first. There would be some problems in these minutes. I'll get a motion, please.
Councilmember Luna Ladd wants to approve the minutes on June twenty first. Phil seconds.
Neil, discuss. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Ferguson abstains.
Green abstains.
Thank you.
Brand abstains.
Okay, uh next up, we have the minutes for June twenty third, twenty twenty two. Um. Any issues? If not, then the motion is.
No moves to approve the minutes. City council special meeting on Thursday, June twenty third, twenty twenty two. Luna Ladd seconds.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Granted, states.
Justice.
Uh lastly, uh Tuesday, July fifth. I I have a question about this right in the first page, where it says public comments rise now the agenda. That last sentence didn't make any sense to me. So I'm not sure what it was you were saying. It's it says, uh Ms. Easton, uh Easton, continue speaking in the topic of Toledo Street after council reports. So, yes, please.
So after council did their reports at the end of the evening, she continued speaking.
Oh, you. Oh, you did, right. In the, in the council.
Yes, at the end of the council reports, at the end of the city council reports, at the end of the agenda.
That's probably like a. It was, no, she was like, I know, but that, that's just for clarity. Okay, thank you. Any other change? Okay, I'm gonna take a motion please.
Bill moves to approve the regular council meeting minutes for Tuesday, July fifth, twenty twenty two. Regency seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Loretta abstains.
Thank you very much. Our next up we have the public report. We're gonna start with police department.
Chief, our two recruits in the academy are still doing will, there's no issue there. They graduated the first meeting in August, I believe. We had a community meeting agreed on June tenth. That was, we had an abundant spoon and a few community members show up. But we'd like to continue that down the road. I think that's a good, good opportunity for people to come in and speak to us and not enforcement in formal setting.
Have you thought about having someone open to the hall?
Um, we could, possible. I mean, we could do it outside in a park somewhere. I mean, we're open to suggestions.
It's just a thought. Sometimes people are, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the people that showed up were, were pretty happy with it, so, you know, we're not gonna give up on it. Uh, the trail marathon and heavy half went off without any incident. We didn't have any problems with that. Um, we're working on this ski citation system that we had, our previous administration purchased, and we're still. Working on being able to use it. We're gonna be meeting with the sheriff's department staff and, and move forward with that. It's time to start using it. And the, as previously mentioned, we had that graffiti case. It was, that the young man who was doing that was a middle schooler, was pretty prolific. He had graffiti, played like fifty different photographs of his graffiti work all over the place. And he went to diversion, right? What did they do? Are they gonna find him, make him pay for it?
I have, I have a, I don't.
Yeah, I was told that his parents had built an art studio in their garage to support his artwork. I guess that wasn't enough, so. Your, your, your game cameras captured three of them and they, we were able to quickly identify who they were through school, school district staff. And determine who, who the ringleader was, who was actually doing the graffiti. So we were able to solve that case. We recently did a, a test of this Bola Wrap device, which is, we're planning on, on purchasing. In the near future to, as a, an adjunct to our tasers. Councilman Luna Leal was gracious enough to go out and, and get.
Wrapped.
Wrapped, shot by this device. As you can see, he's still here. And with, with no, no scar tissue or anything, so that's in the works. And with that, unless you have any questions, I really don't have anything else. Did you find Harry? Who? Harry, the eight year old? No, but I didn't know that there was an eight year old missing. I had a couple officers coming to the shop, I believe it was yesterday. Yeah. Looking for an eight year old named Harry. Okay, well. Just wondering if you spell. I, I can find out.
Any other questions?
Chief, have you started your bike patrol on Mineral Belt yet?
We're working on that. We've got a, a contract that. We have a, a young man that's a citizen that wants to help us out with that and drew up that contract and we're, I'm just waiting to get that approved. And I have, still have one, one community service officer and myself that are able to ride. We, we, we had one that unfortunately had a, had a crash and a concussion, so she won't be riding. So we're working on it, but it, it's, I, I need to find people that wanna ride bikes.
It's, it's interesting. I know this is a. Historic use of the area between the, the library and pretty much middle school with motorized vehicles.
Oh, yeah, I'm well aware of that.
It's. It's getting more prevalent, it seems, just even from a year before. I mean, there's always been people going there. Some of them are. Cruising, you know, ni- nice, you know, I mean, I, I don't know if that's an open route for those type of motorized vehicles or not. However, the, they're increasing in speed and frequency through that area. And I actually saw a young woman on a motorcycle try to get up the hill at, at the library. And she didn't make, make getting tipped back on a motorcycle and. Got injured, her, her father came and picked her up. I kind of witnessed the whole thing. I'm like, well, it's just the, 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 the route itself is getting. More unsustainable, so I don't know how we're gonna be able to inform the public, perhaps that's not. An ideal place to travel through town. And I know it's something that's happened for many, many years, so it will be difficult to, to change, but.
It's a, it's a, this situation with these ATVs and motorcycles, there's no easy fix to it. I've, I've had citizens send me videos of people driving through that section at night. A lot of these off-road, what do they call them, UTVs or ATVs have big sound systems on them. They can blast their music on them. I've gone out there and looked at that area myself. It, it's, it would be very difficult to. To address that specific area. I don't have an easy answer for you. It's, it's legal to, to drive these things around town. And we, we do the best we can as far as, you know, stopping people when we can, but obviously chasing dirt bikers around and people on ATVs is not. Something that, it's a pretty high liability thing for us to do, so. I wish I had a good answer for you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you. Next up, fire department.
Good evening. So the fire corps program is known as the one from the high school. Right, right now, we don't have any students, school's not in session. But Postway Diaz is continuing in our program, but right now we're looking with his immigration status and trying to get him citizenship. So we're gonna try to work on that as much as we possibly can in the fast track manner that we can do so that he can come on board with us. He's doing an excellent job and I'm very proud of him in all the efforts he's done from high school going all the way in. And now we're going to start our program, so. The plan event system down at station two has been installed. That was off of a grant. I was waiting on that last invoice, so I'll be doing reimbursement to the AFG. For like sixty nine thousand dollars pretty soon. I tried to do it today, but for some reason FEMA goes a mess, so. So that'll be coming down here pretty soon. The doors are going in, shooting rock will be going up, so it's coming along. The projected date is supposed to be August tenth, but of course, we're gonna kick that down, that can down a little bit more and. We talked a little bit about today, it'll probably be sometime into September. So the next time I report, I hope it's not October, so, and so on and so forth. So it's coming along, it's really good. If you haven't had a chance to go down there, or if you'd like a personal tour, so I can give you an idea of what all of it is down there, please just reach out to me.
It's like all your doors are replaced now.
All the doors, yeah. We'll, we'll start moving stuff down there soon, once they get the base sealed. And the south side, the two south side bays, we'll start moving all the appliances down, get the desk stuff and. We'll start using it as a storage facility, it's where our spread out all throughout the county. Let's see, training facility, we've been able to clean a bunch of the containers. Thank you for public works and, and the people up at the landfill for us to come bring a bunch of stuff that we've been collecting for. Years before that training facility was built out, thinking we were gonna use it, but now we have to. Simmer down some of the stuff that we have, so we brought a lot of stuff out there. We're gonna, we're gonna build out two containers. If you've ever been out there, you have the big box containers and you have two other ones. We're gonna build the ones that are off site from the big square portion. For, for law enforcement, I'll be getting with you now and, and he. So that we can start using it more than all emergency services training facility. Obviously, that'll give us other areas in the training facility to use for multiple disciplines. But I wanna start kind of cracking that ice and seeing where, where other agencies can utilize those two shipping containers. Cause we're, we were literally set it up, set it up like a house. It'll have a bathroom, bedrooms, living room, all of that. So whatever kind of discipline that people can do, you know, that's training. T D McCann went with the president of the Training Association from the state. He actually brought them out there to kind of give the interest out to. All of the other agencies across the state of Colorado, so we can, so we can start having other fire departments from the state come out and do some training in there. Let's see, I talked about reimbursement. We are in a hiring process right now. We lost firefighter Hillman to the river. He was only with us for a short period of time. We'll do a hiring process for a firefighter. And then we're expecting to lose Captain Olson in September. That's a tremendous loss for us unfortunately, but he wants to do other things in life. So we'll be going for, for either an external process for that or maybe an internal, we haven't quite decided. But then that will change up kind of the whole staffing within the agency slightly. CWPP, new wildfire protection plan that was adopted by the county the other day, this last Tuesday. It has been about a year and a half worth of work to update the old twenty fifteen plan. It will be our roadmap to figure out where we need to work in Lake County for really good projects to keep us better. To do the mitigation efforts to have a safer community protecting us from wildlife fire. It is going to be as I approved last Friday. Oh, you did also. Oh, great. I still haven't signed it yet. I was out of town this last week. And, and you know, permission badge, she was the driving force and all that, and, and I really appreciate, appreciate her leadership. And the reins that she took on that whole program, and I know that the, the other county commissioners were involved as well. But working with Invision, Chafee County and getting other people involved. It was just a great process and we have a great plan now, so I'm very thankful for it, for our community.
One, it is a really good thing. I got to go on a bicycle ride with Jonathan from Arkansas, head one. Oh, and, and we were passing a lot of mitigation efforts during that ride for, for. And then in the woods down off of Academy Road, one thirty, one sixty. Um, and he was, he was really like, and to talk about the efforts.
Did he talk about any kind of grant funding that the county just received also?
I don't, I don't think he missed it.
Five hundred thousand from CoSwap and that will help CMC and. Listen mining, Newman, Newman, do some projects as well, big, bigger projects. So that, that ball's starting to roll down, roll down the road, so it's a marathon, so hold on. Uh, fireworks is great, it's great. Really enjoyed it, no fires. Absolutely happy about it. It was, it was actually one of the displays that we actually were there to just enjoy. It rained just prior to. And with all the worship that we are having, it has been a minimal fire, wildland fire season so far. We did have one the other day up near the lakes. We suspected it was lightning, but. It, it will start to cure this time of year. This is when the monsoons start to move out. All this fine fields will grow up, they'll dry out. So we're gonna get into our wildland season, but we're, we'll prepare for that. Other than six oh three being out of service, six oh three is still out. I talked to you about that earlier. And six oh two just had retired place, cause they had a gouge in the side hole. But we, we do have a type six right now in service, but we can't go on that because. So other than that, I mean, I, I have more, but. Catch you up later. If you have any questions, we have the answer.
Any questions for the fire department? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, next up, we have the street department. It's like we don't have anybody on representing the street department. In, in my just really quick analysis of this, all the numbers are down in terms of hours of, of work. Um, so I don't know to what. Could be important or you're, you know, the accuracy of the report, or I just don't.
And I have a few updates. I could do it in my report or I can do it now regarding streets, okay? So following up on a few things from our last meeting, I wanted to let everyone know. I checked with the streets department on the private parking signs that are being removed and all the signs have been removed. The posts, some of them have not been removed because we either anticipate or the resident. Has made an application for a disabled parking sign, so we didn't wanna remove the post. Because they might end up with a disabled sign there, so that is why you will see some posts and then other posts have not been removed. Because the streets department is worried that if they try and pull the post, they'll disintegrate the concrete. Because the concrete's a little old, so those are the reasons why you're still seeing some posts around town. Following up on that position being posted for the street supervisor. We took the council's recommendation and up the pay commensurate with other departments. So the pay is now fifty five thousand, the pay range is fifty five thousand to seventy thousand. And we updated that on our website and then we updated it in the Herald. And now we're running an ad in the Summit in Dale Daily. So hopefully we'll get some more interested applicants and that's a streets department update.
Thank you. Any questions? Regarding the streets department, any update? I would say that the, the sides that come in for the handicap spaces, the street department did inquire about them. I told them in my office, I don't know if they've gotten enough, they have to, you know, give more even about where it was. So, so should be five that I know of so far. People who have applied to the state, they have to apply to the state. Get their, get their plaque from the state and then we can book the side classes.
A clarifying question, so if there's a handicap sign already up, it is not then.
Not by us, it could have been approved by the state, but if it comes to the city, if, if, well, would, is that something that's been up for a while?
Well, I'm seeing.
Interesting.
On city property or private property?
The city driver. Interesting, uh, if you would address. You can.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
Any other questions for the street department?
Can I just mention something real quick? The police department went out and put notices on all of these houses that have these no parking signs that are affixed to their fences and things like that. We literally take the notice to the signs and put it on their doors too. So we, we can't take them down because it's technically on their property, but we did put the notice on there and let them know that, that there is just public parking on city streets. And that stuff is unenforceable, because their, their signs threaten vehicles to be towed and, and all this stuff. That's just not true and it's not gonna happen. I think your street was.
Is there any additional, um, possible action? I mean, if they refuse to take them down, can you cite them in the court?
It is against our, uh, the chief and I worked on this and there is a section of our code that it prohibits. I'm gonna phrase it too broadly, but essentially people trying to mimic municipal signs, that's not allowed. So we, we're trying the soft approach of letting folks know that they're not allowed and they're not enforceable. And then if we don't get compliance, we'll address it, but yes, it is a violation of our code to have those signs up.
The notice that we posted said that. The notice that we posted said that.
Uh, I do have one just. Visioning piece for the strip, the street department, uh, when it comes to the vacating of St. Louis Ave. And I know we talked about it earlier, uh, is you have this beautiful parking lot back there. It would be fantastic if there was a nice, not a road, but maybe a windy. Park like sidewalk with some sort of vegetation that grows that gets us to that accessible area. And I, and I believe there's gonna be some sort of elevator that goes up through the opera house. But making so there is an actual place to say, parking this way on the street. And then they would be invited to go next to this beautiful, beautiful restored building. And onto our main street of Harrison. So if we can ever get a design to re-envision what St. Louis Ave is. That would be fantastic. Not to say it's either here nor there, but first piece is a conceptual design for that area.
Interestingly enough, that has been a plan at least in our minds for over seven years. Uh, the details of why that came about, uh, but then, but the the restoration of Cape Rock routes now will. Will take precedence as they build out the elevator and the mechanical, the elevator mechanical room. Once that's done, then we do exactly what you're suggesting and make a nice pathway. Down to Harrison.
All right.
And have it all worked.
It's somewhere out there in the future.
Well, it, who knows? The answer is yes.
The answer is yes. Okay.
Any other questions for street department? Okay, uh, thank you. Next up, we have the animal shelter, Caitlin. Thank you for being here.
Hello, everyone. Um, I didn't know if I need to share my screen so that I can show you the department report. I know I was unable to get it in the packet on time.
We all, we all have a copy over here.
Okay, I don't know if if that's an easy thing that Maida can help me with or um, if that's possible, otherwise I can email it out to everybody.
Caitlin, we have a copy here and we can see if we can share it for the folks on.
Okay, beautiful. Okay, thank you. Um, so I know Jenna is on as well, so Jenna, feel free to jump on if you have any points. Um, while I'm on that uh, particular topic. But at the animal shelter for our quick June stats, we had eight adoptions, four surrenders, seven city impounds, twenty one county impounds. Ten unclaimed strays, seven repeat offenders. So these are animals that have been in the shelter before. Um, four transfers in and zero transfers out. So for our June shelter news. Um, our intake was really coming in waves and unfortunately it wasn't like the fun wave pool at a water park. Um, it was more like an angry ocean. So our capacity for care is eleven animals. We have five cat kennels and six dog kennels. Those are double sided, but that's for national standards. So I know specifically with cat kennels, they're supposed to have two feet um, in between their litter box and their resting space. And two feet away from their litter box and their eating area. Um, so on the first of June, we had thirteen animals. On the eighth of June, so these are Wednesdays, we had fifteen animals. On the fifteenth, we had ten animals. Five of those animals were in foster care. So staff wise, we only had five animals in our care. Um, at that time, we did have community members calling to adopt dogs and foster dogs. So we did transfer in four dogs from Aztec, New Mexico. Um, who we thought we had potential fosters and adopters for. So Jenna and myself have learned our lesson. Um, so we will not count on that in the future and we'll make sure that we have fully onboarded fosters prior to transferring foster animals in for them. And then on the twenty second, we were up to twenty one animals in our care. Um, so we did have more animals in foster care, but we also had more dogs and cats at the shelter. When we do have our strays, they're there for five days legally. So nationwide, shelter workers are overwhelmed and many shelters are actually closing their doors. Government based shelters are currently seeing an increased intake of eighteen percent. Um, so with modern sheltering, we want to focus on keeping animals in home and providing support services such as, you know, if they're low on food. We might have a food bank or if they're having behavior issues that they might need to relinquish their pet for, but they would like to keep it. We can refer them to work with trainers. Um, you know, currently we don't have the funding to buy our own food. So I will be meeting with Lori and we'll be doing more of a push for a community food bank as well as. Getting with Planned Pet Hood, Leadville, Grateful Paws, Mountain Dogs, et cetera, to see what we can do um, to help people with this burden. And recently there was an article called Shelter Staffing Crisis. Um, so there are some bullet bullet points down there, but I'll just hit on some of the highlights. Um, Best Friends Animal Society did a survey of a hundred and eighty seven animal welfare organizations. And eighty seven percent of those organizations reported that they are extremely short staffed. Basically, when summer hit, um, shelter workers were completely overwhelmed, which caused a mass exodus of new shelter staff. So myself, Jenna and Shiler have all been in the sheltering world since before COVID. But those who are new to the sheltering world don't, aren't prepared for what happens when we become overwhelmed. And we see a lot of compassion fatigue, a lot of burnout. And you know, that's just easy. We're kind of invested, but it's easier for new staff to leave. Um. So the article reported particularly government shelters, it's nearly impossible to keep up with hiring, onboarding and training. There's a plethora of entry level jobs which offer higher pay and less stress. Um, this is bolded just because our staff, I completed almost sixteen days of work in a row. Um, other staff members are coming in when sick, solo, injured, um, because we are working with living creatures. So you know, we can't, if you're sick and you have a desk job, you know, you can put that work off until later. Um, so we do want to give a shout out to Shanti for coming in and helping with our washing machine as well as Lori for getting him. Um, kind of as our, as our assistant during this time when we're short staffed and we need people. Thankfully, we've had some great community service people come in. Uh, we did reach out to a handful of volunteers, but we did not hear anything back. Um, Dawn has also been helping lighten the load by helping me with some of the financial stuff. Because I'm getting in there and cleaning kennels as well. So some solutions, um, obviously increased funding would be for the next budget, but just so you guys know, it's gonna be on the agenda. Um, and from that article, it did say on their solutions, if we want community support services, we'd have to fund them. Uh, recommend asking city council meetings about next year's budgets. Um, so if you all recall from last year, I did get some letters of support. And then um, it was highlighted that the animals are coming from the community and the animals are going to the community. So shelters can't succeed operating as an island. We, it recommended doing spay neuter contracts, which we've actually been doing since last year. Um, obviously we only have one vet in town. We do work with Planned Pet Hood, um, Dr. Jess Clinic down in Wheat Ridge when we hear back from them. Um, but it's not consistent enough. So unfortunately, much to the staff's um, disliking. We have adopted out plenty of animals who are not spayed or neutered. They do come with contracts and a hundred dollar deposit. So far on our follow ups, everybody is getting fixed, um, because they do sign a contract that is state approved through PACFA. And that's, you know, one way that we're alleviating, holding on to animals until they're fixed. Um, otherwise we would be overflowing with animals. So currently for July, we are short staffed. Um, we don't want to have to close the shelter. There are safety concerns for the animals or for ourself. As well as we've had to deal with hostile or upset community members who are threatening. Um, I did talk to Hal about this and so we will be contacting them if it happens again. But it's not, it's not a rare occurrence. Unfortunately, I know one of Lori's first tours, um, someone was cursing me on the phone when she was there. Uh, July twenty sixth, we were over capacity with twenty eight animals in our care with six dogs, eight cats and kittens. Uh, one stray cat and two kittens. And again, we did have twenty one animals come in from the county. So another recommendation is doing scheduled intake. That's nationally recommended. Ask for the public to keep found animals if they're able to. Ask families to hold on to their surrenders. Uh, so last week while I was working solo, we did have a family who wanted to surrender their two dogs because they didn't have time with for them. So I did have a discussion with her that, you know, they would be in a kennel, um, as we only have one staff member. So we are planning on um, scheduling with her a surrender time. She's gonna get us some, some pictures and some information. So we can work with her to create a rehoming flyer. Um, but that's kind of one of the solutions when shelters are overrun. Uh, we will have the Denver Dumb Friends League's community liaison. So we're having Anna and Ally come out visiting us Wednesday, July twenty seventh. If you scroll down, I have the data from the Shelter Animals Count National Database. Um, they did report that based off our twenty twenty one statistics and budget, they reported we were only given enough funds for a hundred and sixty one animals. While we cared for three hundred and fifty three, sixty three of those were transfers, but two hundred and ninety of the three fifty three were community animals. Um, so we lacked funding for a hundred and twenty nine community animals. So you can see our intake throughout this year has just continued to rise. They also have national statistics. So again, nationwide intakes are increasing. Um, it was eighteen percent for government shelters. Talks about why they're.
I apologize. Don't I need to wrap this report up?
Yep, okay. So that's, that's basically towards the end. Talks about why they're being um, relinquished. And then we have down here our statistics for the month of June. Um, so shout out to the police department who did bring in eight um, stray animals. We had two from the SO, three from staff members and nineteen from private citizens. And then the only thing that's needs updated is this final expense as I'm working with Donna so that it reflects her uh, financial report as well.
Okay, any questions for the city council regarding the animal shelter? My guess, what is your current census in the animal shelter as of today?
Um, I was not in there today, um, but I do believe we still have four dogs, two adult cats and two kittens. As well as eleven animals in foster.
Thank you. Any other questions from the city council? Thank you very much. Next up, we have a license even before any questions for lighter. Here you go, we'll, we'll move on. Um, we have the building department report. Thank you, Captain Lee Parker, for giving us some numbers each one. Do some, some idea. Any questions regarding the report? Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, sales tax comparison report. We had talked about last month, but the mysterious two hundred thousand dollar.
Right, so uh, our finance director isn't able to attend tonight, but I think as you can see from the schedule of sales tax for uh, June. Our numbers jumped up quite a bit as you can see, four hundred and seventy two thousand for a hundred and thirty two dollars. This includes a yet explained additional amount from the county. Uh, and we are still trying to, I can't think, the county is still trying to determine what exactly that amount uh, is for. But we are happily going to uh, accept the money and what if you can see where we are. With fifty percent of the year elapsed, if I'm looking at this rate, we are um, at seventy seven point six percent of our revenue. So twenty seven point six.
Seventy seven percent over budget.
Right, over, over what we anticipated our revenue would be. So twenty, yeah, so you can see that things are going quite well. Um, we're still, I, we will not see the same number for July. We will not see a four hundred thousand dollar number. We'll see it drop back down to probably what's more co- uh, comparable to what you've seen in the previous two months. That, because that does include the unexplained amount from the account, the the county which we have deposited and. Are in our account.
That same thing happened, like I said before, about seven years ago, uh, we got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And nobody ever was able to explain where it came from. It just out of the blue. And and it was a, it was a back taxes issue of some sort. That's all we knew. Uh, so we don't know exactly where this additional two hundred thousand dollars came from, uh, but uh.
Well, we, we, it came from the county and I guess what we'll say is having them say surprise, here's extra money is much better than surprise. You owe us money. So uh, we'll take these good kind of surprises. Do you, did you want me to?
Why me? Yes, Tracy, why?
Um, it's not from the county, it's from the state. I just wanted to correct them.
Well, yeah, technically, but you know, the county's one who cuts a check. Everything, everything comes to us in that case, comes from directors from the county. And state reported to them, how it was reported to them on that official amount. Okay, next up, we have the financials. Um, I've done my analysis of the financials. Interestingly, every single department uh, is is under budget in terms of payroll. Uh, sometimes that's, that's not such a good thing. Police department and fifty seven years at forty one point three five percent of payroll. We know the reasons for that and uh, you know, hopefully uh, next year will, maybe it will be over budget. Who knows? I can do that if one.
Well, I think, and and I, I, I think that's, to some extent, you all know why that is. It's because we've had prolonged vacancies in many departments. And you know, for example, we're gonna talk about the police department, you know, they're under budget as far as salary employees, but way over budget as far as part time employees. And that's because we had a police officer who was part time, who willingly stepped up to be full time for the year. So that we could have that extra staffing and most departments uh, are under budget. Because they have had prolonged vacancies, which is not necessarily a good thing for the current staff causing uh, burnout. I mean, and and a shout out to the animal shelter who was down to one person uh, this last week because of, you know, we lost an employee. Got a better paying job and another employee on vacation, another employee out sick and that's just how things are at the city sometimes.
Uh, so the street department, fifty seven years at thirty nine point three percent. Um, in terms of ju- just dealing with employee costs. Um, the animal shelter is at forty one percent. Um, and even the fire department, who has been pretty much fully staffed most years, forty four point six. Um, not quite sure what that is, but that's the conversation ever the chief of. Let's talk to. Uh, so the budget overall, the budget is in very good shape, not just from employee cost, but overall, uh, the budget looks good. Any, any questions about any particular items on that budget?
I have one question on. City hall expenditures. The EV charging station utilities. That almost four thousand dollars on that. Is that just pain for cars being charged or?
I, I don't have the answer to that. I haven't seen that number.
It's line number zero one four zero six six three four two. It's page forty three of the packet.
Well, I'm sorry, what was the last four on that?
Six three four two.
Six two four two. Um, actually, it's one thousand eight hundred forty eight and it may very well be.
Well, your, your today is thirty eight hundred, right?
Thirty eight, so what we're gonna do, actually, in session, I have seen today. Um, Glenn brought that with the, of the company that's gonna put in four EV charging stations. Uh, at their gas station, circulate and they're doing. at their gas station, circulate, and they're doing it nationwide. And so i- in my mind, that takes a lot of pressure off us. I was worried about it. Should we be adding charging stations? And the answer is that the private sector is going to take this on. No. And the other thing we talked about is what are they charging for their fast chargers? And they said they're going to charge thirty-five cents per megawatt hour. And so we may hear that, but we have to get that installed. We're waiting to see what is, what is, what is the use? What's the need? And so now we have to get installed a big car charging system in that station.
So we start, we're still charging.
We're not charging.
Is that typical to not charge at first?
I have no idea. It's typical of that. But we, we don't, we don't know, we don't know. It should be seen. This is probably our first month. We've really been able to see, okay, what, what is we're talking about? If we were talking about a couple hundred bucks a month, we probably would need more. But if we're talking about two thousand dollars, yeah.
Thank you.
But I, 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 I'm really encouraged by the fact that the private sector is going to, I suspect we're receiving this a lot of corporate gas station segments, putting EV charging stations. And then all four of theirs are going to be, not only are they going to be fast chargers, but they're going to be probably three times the speed hours because of the capability of the stations there. It's a brave new world. Any other questions about the the financials? Okay, thank you very much. I show you have bills up next, but we don't have any bills in the package, so.
Oh, you need your new special.
What page are you on?
LH. You can actually, yes. Maida, thank you for tapping all of our sections too. It's awesome.
You're welcome.
First time.
Okay, I do not have bills in front of me, but.
Just have a question on the LH Foster Properties, July twenty twenty-two resident rental payment?
Yeah.
What, what is that for?
That's for the fire department.
Okay.
That's for the resident reserve program. That's two thousand dollars a month.
Gotcha.
It, it, they house three residents or something.
Oh, and then I had a question on, did we figure out the gas mystery?
Well, so we did a handful of things that, and one of the things that we did previously that solved the problem previously, which is we canceled all the cards and reissued new ones. And that has for the last two billing cycles decreased the the cost. But you're going to see that the actual bill may not be that much lower as time goes on because the cost of fuel is going up, but we were looking at the gallons. And so it, it solves the problem before, it's solving the problem again. We don't know why that happens sometimes, but it, it so Donna had canceled all the cards and reissued it, and that has helped. I think it dropped, and I'm going to be guessing, I think it dropped the fuel bill by four hundred dollars or around there.
Hard to attribute cause and effect.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's but you will see, like I said, i- if you think it's going to decrease the bill over time, it's actually not going to decrease the actual cost over time because the cost of gas keeps going up. But I think we, we did conclude it did reduce some of the gallons of use, so. Yes, we addressed it. We put a solution in place. We don't know why it works, but it does.
Any other questions about the bills? Here we go. I would give a motion to pay bills.
Councilmember Fregency moves to pay the bills.
Move on that seconds. Any other discussion? All in paper, please say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Yes, please.
Would you like me to read into the record the how the vote pass or how the motion pass?
My suggestion was if there's so many in favor, so many opposed, sometimes it's helpful to say motion passed, three in favor, two opposed, just because sometimes I can't count the votes. But.
Motion to pay the bills passed with a vote, seven in favor, none against, none abstaining, and none absent.
Okay, next up, we have the city administrator's report.
Great, well, thank you. And following up on a few things from our last meeting that I talked about. So you all have your surfaces that came in. So thank you for being amenable to going electronic based upon the amount of paper that we are not using anymore. I really appreciate that. And also our IT person pointed out that we pay our per page on our copyright that we lease. So I'm hoping that this will save the city a bunch of money. It saves a bunch of trees. And I hope that, I thank Maida for tabbing the packet for you. I hope you find it's more helpful. And it's certainly less work for staff. So we appreciate your trying this out. Couple other things to update you on the eight oh nine Spruce Street housed. As you all have seen, there is a shortage of housing. There are some people who are going to lose their housing coming because of the sale of the bank building. We have been approached by a number of people who might be looking for housing imminently. And so I asked our city attorney, Kristiana McCormick, to let us know if we could use the house for one person or one family before we get the CUP approved. And the answer is yes, it is zoned, single-family home. So if need be, we could put a family in it before we had the CUP approved. And if need be, we are looking towards doing that. There are a, a couple of people who've reached out who might be imminently losing their housing. One person is a county employee. So we're working to try and figure out if we can make that happen because that is the reason that we, we have this is to make sure our community members don't have to leave our community. So one other thing I mentioned in one of my prior meetings was a goal setting with Christie Dune from Dora. And I wanted to throw out a date for potential goal setting. We, we can do it during a council meeting, but we should probably have a very light agenda on that meeting or schedule a special meeting. And so sometime in September would be ideal. We have a meeting on September sixth. And if everyone's amenable to making that meeting majority goal setting, I know there might be some business we need to cover. But the idea would be to spend at least, I mean, some cities do a weekend retreat, some cities do a half a day. I think we, we should plan on a couple of hours and see that if, I think that should give us enough time. But Christie would like us to get some dates where we might be amenable to doing that. So just what about, what's that? Yes. I can.
I mean, that. Any other opinions from city council?
Do we have a Laura meeting that day?
The thirteenth or the sixth.
Well, I have done a potential Laura meeting on the, on the thirteenth based on our prior scheduling with that entity. I also question if it's really reasonable to tack a potential two-hour discussion on a quote lightly scheduled regular meeting as we have had a dearth of lightly scheduled regular meetings this year.
I think you're absolutely correct. Let me use on the second Tuesday Yeah. So that, that would be precisely correct. I, I still feel like try, trying to conflate a good work session or goal setting with the city council meeting just feels problematic. And city council meetings, sometimes we don't know exactly what the agenda is going to be until, you know, the Friday.
So when would be if we're looking? I think we, we would really try and get it in September. When would be a good time in September?
What about August thirtieth? We have five Tuesdays in August.
Or September twenty-seventh. That's an open Tuesday.
All right.
What is, what is the February else's city council, or is it trivia for that work party for a two-hour session?
Will there be a Zoom option? Because I'll be moving a child out to college at that time.
Yes.
Perfect.
May I offer a suggestion before the goal-setting meeting? So it's as productive as possible. Is there a way? Perhaps we can have some sort of format that then can inform our goal setting that, that from what you've heard in the past year since you've been here, Lori, maybe working with mayor, mayor, coming up with a list of of ideas, topics, concerns raised by our public, and maybe we rank them even before we get to this meeting. So then we can then have a, you know, then actually level that, level our individual thoughts and maybe add additional suggestions to it. And so then by the time we get to this goal-setting meeting, we have a general shape of what we all feel should be some of those goals moving forward. I, I, I don't know if that would make sense. I'm just trying to figure out, instead of starting with nothing as a target, perhaps having something that is a formulated twenty-five percent conceptual target that we can shoot at as our goal setting.
Yeah, I think the idea would be, and I talked to Christie about this, working with each of the departments in advance so that they could come up with some of their goals. And so you have each department's ideal goals. Then I think probably each council member should send me their goals, and then we can get those out in advance and have people either you can, we can figure out a way to rank them overall, or we can rank them by category. But yes, you will have, and I think the other thing that would be important is to talk about where goals that we had, the city had for twenty twenty-two, just quickly how we did on those and any that you might want to carry over into twenty twenty-three. So yes, okay. All right, that sounds good. I will check with Christie about that date and hopefully that date works for her. A couple other quick things. Councilmember for Gency asked about this, and it reminded me to let you all know, the city is now a member of the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, which is actually a really great group for gathering data and sharing knowledge about some of the stresses that our level has in particular, being a vacation town. And they've already provided, I think I provided some of their great data about short-term rentals. And their annual meeting is in Salada, August twenty-fifth through twenty-sixth. And being members of, of CAST now, I believe it's very inexpensive to attend. Councilwoman for Gency, did you register anything? It's like forty-five dollars or something. So.
Not yet.
I can send you the link if anyone would like to attend. We, I'm having a meeting tomorrow with our HR consultant to discuss the progress and status of the salary assessment. It's taken longer than we expected in part because the Colorado Municipal League just released their most recent salary data that they gather every year. They just released that in June. So we wanted to make sure the most recent data was, we weren't going off of last year's data. One other thing, then I attended the Mineral Belt Trail Committing Committee Meeting, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. And there was this discussion of e-bikes and wanted to just update everybody about where state law is regarding e-bikes. It was a good education, I think, for all of us about, you know, educating folks on the trail about proper etiquette and everything. Right now, state law allows class one and class two e-bikes where other bikes are currently permitted. So if a bike is currently permitted on the E, on the Mineral Belt Trail, which it is, class one and class two bikes are allowed. My point on this is if people have a concern about speeding on the Mineral Belt, they have a speeding issue. They don't necessarily have an e-bikes issue. So that is something, like I said, that Chief and I are working on as far as the bike patrol and getting some help with that. One other, oh, two more things. Music in the park. Councilmember Grant mentioned that. It was a success. The, we estimated about one hundred and fifty people were there. It was well received, and there were no issues. I think there was some concern about crowding and if certain areas would be overflowed or there might be some congestion that, that didn't pan out. So that's great news. The last thing I wanted to clarify, because I had a question about this with, and I clarified with our city attorney about abstaining. So a couple of things. With the, when you abstain, it's generally for a reason where you are recusing yourself because there's a conflict. And in that case, what, there may be a, a reason to have you exit the chambers so that you aren't participating in the vote or the debate. But that's, abstention usually arises when there's a conflict of interest. I wanted to let everyone know in, in my past, and I wanted to clarify with our city attorney, you do not have to abstain from voting in favor or against the minutes if you didn't attend the meeting. So you can review the minutes, correct typos, talk about grammatical errors and all that, even if you weren't at the meeting. So if anybody thinks they have to abstain because they weren't at the meeting from voting on the minutes, that's not the case. Generally, abstentions occur when you feel there's a conflict of interest. You should state your conflict of interest, and then our city attorney can help you determine how you recuse yourself from that vote. So that was just the last point of clarification.
Without those reasons is considered a yes or a no vote?
Well, it's so in the scheme of things, you need a majority vote to pass. So if you have no votes and abstentions, something may fail if someone, so if, if that, if that makes sense, it, it may not be maybe equivalent to the no vote in the sense that a motion may not pass because someone abstained.
Okay, so what is the answer?
Well, the answer is if you, someone makes a motion and you have less than a majority of people who vote in favor of it, including those abstaining, it is the equivalent to a no vote.
Kristiana, please.
Thanks. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So when somebody abstains, it is the equivalent of a no vote, as Lori just said. And so that's, that's really all I was going to add to the conversation.
Okay, thank you. Would it be recorded as a no vote or as an extension?
Recorded as an abstention.
So if we weren't at a meeting, what should we do?
If you weren't at a meeting and you have. If you weren't at a meeting and you have reviewed the minutes and had a chance to take a look at them and have no corrections, or you've familiarized yourself with them as, you know, part of your role as a city council member, you can vote to approve them.
So we can have this conversation another time with Christiana. I think having an extension as recorded as an extension is, is gives people the opportunity to avoid vote properly, even though it's recorded as a no vote. It still seems problematic.
Okay, you, you and I and Christiana can clarify that. But right, my, my point being that you should only abstain generally if you are recusing yourself for a conflict of interest.
In which case you should recuse yourself before the vote takes place. Recusal is something completely different.
Well, you're thinking just in minutes. I'm thinking of any vote.
No, I'm thinking, yeah. You need to recuse yourself. You need to do that before the vote takes place. Not, not abstain at the time of the vote. Because in the usual situation.
Correct.
You should have removed yourself from the conversation entirely.
Correct.
Before it took place.
Right. Right. And that's why we say you should let us know so we can work out the process with the city attorney. Good. And that, I think that's it for me.
Any questions for the city minister?
So I'm sorry, please. I just want to say I have attended a cast meeting before and it is really, really refreshing. So as much as I'd like to attend this year in Salida, I would encourage anybody that has the opportunity to, to attend. I think it's open to any city council or town manager or commissioner or whatever. It's, it's, it's pretty awesome. Really amazing people there.
What is that scheduled?
August 20, I am registered. It is August 25th through 26th, the Thursday and Friday.
And then my second point is, is about the mineral belt. I type one, type two e-bikes seem to be actually allowing people who might not be able to do it, to do it. And they're actually not the ones going very fast. And I'm going to make a stereotype about the people who are. It's those retired old dudes that are flying around on their road bikes that do not want to stop for anybody anytime because they are getting to their heart rate. And it is, I've almost been hit by these people. Like I said, I'm all, I'm, I'm stereotyping. I'm saying that right now, but I cannot believe some of these people that are just yelling at you, on your left, on your right, and give you this terrible look as you're biking up a hill with your kids. And they're flying out of nowhere. So yeah, I like the speed limit idea and I hope that we're able to get that bike patrol on because it happens pretty much anywhere on mineral belt.
I wanted to ask in terms of the CUP, is it scheduled for the next city council meeting? The CUP on the reverse.
Oh, no, no. I, Christiana and I have talked about it. Our plates have been overflowing. So it, it is gonna, it's probably not going to be on for a couple of agendas.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for the city minister? Thank you very much. Okay. Now we have a discussion of the city financial contribution for the level like county regional housing authority.
We're going to pass out some of the expressions in this.
Has the spreadsheet changed since we looked at this one?
There is the change that you and I discussed the national number of 2A.
Thank you. We discussed today.
I want to start with the, just real quick. I kind of had a wake up the other day. I'm like, where you're in. I'm here to repay a grant with the city and county to adopt all five strategies. Was the whole purpose of why I came. We have a quick, our quick, try to keep this intense. There's a lot here. But I just wanted to give this update on the qualify strategy because the grant is due September 1st. So we have a lot of work still to do, but there's good news and then there's lots of work news that I have. So I was a screen share here. All right. So if you go down to the next slide, the door grant, we originally conceived of was to create six qualified strategies or 16 months to develop those qualified strategies. At this time, if you go down to the next slide, we have actually fully adopted two qualify strategies. One came to a PUD amendment that, that was set at the county level. And also, we were also able to do that at the county level for ADUs. They are permitted under your code. So we have two fully adopted comparable qualified strategies in this thing. Next slide. The whole purpose of this regional housing authority is it actually adopts four of the qualified strategies. So with just the adoption of the IDA, we're going to hit the dual six qualified strategies, which we're set out to do. A lot, majority of it revolves around the use of publicly owned property. Right now, statute of city can't without the people disposed of publicly owned property. Therefore, the regional housing authority will serve as the mechanism for when you actually develop a property to sell to future of rural housing. That is kind of the big reason why we set out on this voyage to begin. The second piece is that this actually creates a mechanism to develop property through permanent funding streams. The housing coalition and through the city vote of 2A created a permanent stream. And we'll talk about how that works within the budget of regional housing authority. For just kind of last three cases discussed. Why do we stand making? So having a regional housing authority to be able to receive property, I know the climate properties, that's something that's to discuss. Being able to have this property's landing is again another qualified strategy. Next slide. There are a couple of other low paying through qualifying strategies that are out there. One, we currently allow two plus, three plus as a multi county units. We, I met with the planning commission, we could go, talk about what's called subdivision exemption process for town home creation. So when you actually build a duplex, you want to sell half to one of rural housing, not a one half to another. The issue with the creation of the subdivision class is they have to be done with a building construction. The server actually has to go in and shoot the particles, right? The big issue is that currently in your code, you do not have a process that's expedited. It will basically languish through meeting after meeting under your current subdivision code. That basically you have a building finished, you have two buyers that have won the lottery and are super excited to commit, but they can't move into the properties because they haven't been leased and provided. That will cause massive headaches not only for the developer because they're paying construction interest, but it's also going to wind up basically the person who has gone through the loan process to purchase their loan approval from that on the table of buying, waiting for the subdivision approval. Most communities handle this situation the same, the same thing with climate, which is some, you own the dirt underneath units. So it's a two hour fire wall and you actually own the dirt underneath condominiums. This is when you have stacked units. So you have more apartment style, but you want the airspace. Both of those are required are plat and a re-subdivision of the existing lot. The good news about that process just for quickly is that by that time that building was built, it is metal. And if it hasn't, you know, much bigger issue at that point, right? Because the builder didn't build it to the right setback, the right air market. So it's really an interesting, so we're working with the planning zoning commission to get that to you as a recommendation with us solidify that last. Final two that will kind of, so that is the second. The final two, next slide that are out there that get us to nine, which really, because it's going to be competitive application, we really hit the mark with DOL and exceed what we set out to do, or at least last two. One is the expedited review of applications that have housing in them that are for 120% and are less. And also the allowance for smaller residential properties, which your code currently already has in place for 600 square feet. The, the game plan on this is that we'd like to bring back a resolution. And we'll get into, there's a secondary resolution, a third resolution supporting natural grant application. At your second meeting in August, solidifying this to also codifying, or not codifying, but recognizing all the other qualified strategies that the city has in place. You will, in my experience of going through this, they actually will, actually has an end user turn that actually recodes to say, yes, that does qualify as a qualified strategy. No, that does not look the mark for qualified strategy. So we hope to bring back a resolution saying, here's what we did to the process of adopting qualified strategies. Here's what the city did, the counties can also consider a resolution saying, here's what the county did. And here's, and here are more figures. Next slide. So going back to the regional housing authority, I think it's really important to just point to that. Why do you, why do you take the natural ones? Trying to do all this, all this stuff. And I apologize when I have to make sure I squint with that eyes. First, you know, the use of publicly owned property is paramount piece of this, both the city and county are to dispose of all the property. This allows the regional housing authority to serve as a conduit, getting his properties to homeowners. Obviously essential housing programs can be offered to the regional housing authority. And in fact, the creation of regional housing authority allows us, the, allows your community to access this program with right grants and provide that program direction to folks. You, one big thing that jumped out at me and, and working through that actual boiling rate budget yesterday was the fact that both communities control utilities. And this is an exceptionally diverse folks from water sanitation districts are special districts. Well, this will allow instead of the city or the county having to negotiate with special districts, the regional housing authority can service that fund to it, the work of those utilities. That's actually a big one that kind of like didn't occur to me until I read about the qualify strategies. I'm sorry, I was horrible. Obviously the administration of community guidelines. And then finally, the biggest thing is through the housing site, how, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The last big one is a dedicated funding stream. And I think that's really important as we talk through the budget, moving forward on this, you know, the site analysis, for instance. There's $8 million in infrastructure needs before you ever build a house on the property. Respectfully, without major hits to both the city's general funds and the county's general funds, that property is going to realize its full potential without additional funding being brought in through a mechanism that is allowed through regional housing authority. And those two mechanisms are a sales tax and in the IDA, a 1% up to 1% sales tax and a one property bill. So those are, those are kind of reasons why we set off and why we're doing this. Next slide. So we have, we deadlines, we actually have to have a letter of intent. If we do agree letter of intent, well, we'll be invited, we'll put forward a full application in October or November. This is going to, I'm not going to, sure, this, this is probably one of the most edited grants that we, that I know I have ever applied for. And I can tell you firsthand, I was denied the catalytic ground for a project that to this day, I'm just baffled. It was 83 units in those rural the depressed part of the state, six counties and some of these. We actually have apologies from the law. So they wanted to work all by strategies and our community's going, so. But we have, it is going to be a very competitive. I think if we get to that nine threshold qualified strategies, we will be very competitive. Beyond that, when we actually start talking about what 1.4 million dollars are due, it's going to leverage our ability on 70, 80 new houses for your community by 2025. That is incredible. We are allowed to apply up to 3 million, but if you read the fine language, it's like, but we're, we keep it to the limit. You'll see with the budget that I've got out. The current, currently is 1.4, which would give three infill sites for development. This is a great comment on the tiers. Remember I said that state funders would come in and the community guideline tiers will no longer apply. It's one four year less before sale and 8% or less further down. So if you take their money, that is what we're going to do as far as making less. And then the biggest thing is that funds, because our funds, the funds must be spent by June 2024, which I'm more than confident we can get utility lines in. So as long as we spend the money for the actual utility lines, doesn't matter the housing, they actually care about the actual construction. Next slide. So how are we really, you know, we did the same analysis process that you, that she did and I sent it to you. This has been very enlightening and it's awesome because they have basically shown that there are three infill sites that can generate about 70 new houses. The first is the triangle sites and the half block that's owned by a school district. We are reading, me and Jackie and I are going to school district meeting on the first week of August to talk with them about whether or not they want to participate. And I'll talk about why it's advantageous in just a second when I get to the first slide for this particular property. But again, this is another negotiation point with the city and the school district about their expectations that they do contribute in terms of the dollar. The next are the two half blocks on the next slide. So this is, I think, forty something units. These, each of these half blocks, I actually just went and looked at both on the pupil pool. Those are about 15 to 19 units a block. So when you add that all up, you have between 70 and maybe minutes. But this grant, so the next slide gets to, and I really had to spend some time, this is going to be on the staring screen, but you're right. When Taratik did this, when the Taratik did the budget, you'll see that the actual top line is what we're actually focused on for the delivery. But I want to call the attention to this, the second block of numbers right there. Because it's really important, this is why it's advantageous that, you know, like, why would the school district, for instance, participate in, in a project like this? When you look at the actual, what I consider broccoli boss, that second line, 322,000, that is what it's going to cost to bring the utilities from the mains to the foundations. It's, it is not a small number. By any, if you scroll down just a little bit further to go to the bottom of the page, just for that, that school district side, they have $900,000 at these level. So when you think about those costs, the cost that will be, even with the builder grant, will still be added to the foundation of any unit we build, which is about $30,000 per unit on that site. So if a regional housing authority is established, if they're able to do an additional funding source, they can continue to buy down with participation of at these, et cetera, and make those units more and more affordable, which I hope doesn't get lost. What you also see is that this middle piece of what caused my eyes to bore last night is that they did do a good job in ensuring that engineering costs and indices and everything else that would be required when you look at to do this kind of right, if we're included. And so what I was able to do is, if you go to the next slide, was distill this down, this is impact it. Distill this down into a budget of, that's, that's the story. So again, we're just on screen. What we're looking at though is about $900,000 of projects to do, two sort of main extensions, no, and a lot of extensions, make those three sites very vertical. Included in that, which brings it up to about 1.4, is your engineering and design cost, a lot of operating that is going to be required as well as a healthy dependency of 20%. So that brings that to 1.4. The door grant requirement for a match is 20%. So that brings the match from the local municipalities to about 287. So that is what we are going, you know, if we, if we decide to, and I say we, the council and the PSCC decided for a full application. This is the very draft budget that over the next month, maybe buying a perfect budget. So we fall. What I also want to point out is again, two giant budget numbers that are not included are the gas and electric, which is estimated by Taratik to be about 230,000. The reason I do not want to include gas and electric in this is they're normally the last utilities in. And because the money has to be spent in the way those utilities go in, it just doesn't make sense to try to put that into this going rank. And it would bring the door grant up substantially to a, to a number well, for our ass. All right. Last slide. So we, sorry, this is, this is intended. All right, last slide. So, uh, we, uh, sorry, this is, this is intended. Uh, highlight, I don't want to read to see if you can look through it, but this just gives you an idea of what it's going to take. To get these houses under construction, get a development R Q out and get folks in. They're, you know, uh, with a really aggressive timeline and start closing the number of twenty twenty-five on the first thousands and last February, then at the end of twenty twenty-five. This project at full build out is probably a fifteen million dollar project. So it's fifteen million dollars of new local housing in the community by clever tip one four nine dollars. Uh, which is pretty awesome. All right, so that's the dollar grant, that's, that's a huge, huge uh flaw right there. I'm going to stop for the I G A and the cost here, which is about half budget, to answer questions on where we're at on the dollar grant. Uh, and then we'll get into the regional housing authority, I G A.
Uh, real quick, it's something I meant to ask you today, I forgot, uh, is brownfield. Grant money, can it be used for any of this or would that be a completely separate ask?
Completely separate ask. And the only thing I'll say is there's no such thing as free money and grants have a lot of time. So that's, I I not that it's not worth looking at, but trying to leverage a grant with a grant is going, which we can do. It it just adds considerable time and cost because, especially because Brownfield's. This, this grant is, I want to be real clear too, this is a very unique opportunity. This is not a typical dollar grant. This is a one and done program that they're offering. Uh, I've been screaming and jumping up and down at the meetings for years, asking for infrastructure dollars and not gap funding. Because this is, I mean, you can see those costs of real cost. And that's actually what local governments do. They don't build houses, they take care of utilities, they take care of roads, they take care of streets. By empowering that local government to deal with the infrastructure which they could add and allowing for, uh, allowing a vertical. I mean, you can see how much cost that takes out of the environment, buys that affordability. Um, any questions on that? So the, if you go to the last slide, what's really important about that. Getting into the budget here is when I originally came, we originally talked about a million dollar grant. And the match being twenty percent was originally contemplated as a hundred thousand dollars from the city and a hundred thousand dollars from the county. Uh, with good news about, I'm not sure if there's any good news about a hundred thousand dollars. But the good news is that it is an allocation for twenty twenty-three budget allocation. So. You would have, because of the past resolution saying that you tend to match the funds, but it can be part of your budget for twenty twenty-three. Um, and that obviously, if we don't get the grant, it should be a major bummer. Then you can reconsider whether or not you would want to put that into the development fund for the regional housing authority. Um, we can talk through that a little more detail as well. What you will see on here is that the county is contemplating a possibility of seeing about their match being two hundred thousand. So making up that additional hundred eighty-seven thousand. The reason for that is, uh, in discussions with the cabinet, and they're actually considering an additional hundred thousand in case you're having our assessments. Or geotech that needs to be done hard to even getting out uh engineering request. Uh, is that as you go through the regional housing authority budget, so to go up. Uh, for the next page, what I want to point to on this budget that you have in front of you, uh, do you go up to the budget? Right bottom is. And so the request on the, the B O C C is that for operating that. The I G A that currently matters, city and county for the housing director, basically the funds for that that carry over. And allow it to continue to operate. And the good news is that as the I G A is currently contemplated, that covers operating costs. So there is no additional to create the regional housing authority to actually do housing program. Your current I G A functions to allow this to just kind of work into a regional housing authority. That's great because I kudos to the city and county for working so hard and the housing polish to fit that establishment because that just allows us to seamlessly grow this. The bad news is development property is very, very expensive. Uh, with accents of accent, the contributions from the city and county, that's matching funds and a dollar grant. It's going to be very hard to see any future development really coming out of this. Uh, without, without sizable contributions or knock on wood, a future housing stream being secure. Uh, the goal is that hopefully that if that does occur, then. That doesn't like what I said, is that Jackie gets to the nest and have an extra door and a regional housing authority. Uh, and and move it forward. Obviously, we missed the option of ballot initiative, it takes a lot of work, so that's not happening for this year. And so we're really looking at a two-year budget for how this works. Again, going back to the two-way money, the county with the B O C C discussions, their willingness to. Put in the extra, extra two hundred thousand dollars beyond the original one hundred is with the assumption that the leftover two-way money. Would then go to the regional housing authority, what is ever left. So there is a seventy thousand dollar contribution under the current I G A. And then it would also be more of a merit and be an additional, what's contemplated is an additional seventy thousand dollars. That would continue to go into the regional housing authority and have that, that board direct how to use that money just for housing purposes. Uh, and so that is basically the final piece of the I G A that's missing. Is just the financials of how do we ensure that those revenue streams. Operate, allow the regional housing authority to operate. And then beyond that, how do we actually enable what would be the development community of the housing authority? We go after this grant and try to leverage this. Yes.
I have a question. Uh, I, you had me up to just like about five minutes ago, maybe three minutes ago.
Yeah.
Uh, and I just want to recap this because now I need it in fifth grade terms. Uh, what you presented originally is the fact that we need to have a match, but a match of three hundred thousand total, two hundred thousand dollars coming from the B O C C. A hundred thousand dollars coming from the city, specific for the dollar grant of a minimum of twenty percent. So it's a two-part question. Uh, if, is there any incentive for us to? Make it more than twenty percent? I mean, we just spent eight hundred thousand dollars on a eighteen fifty, eighteen seventy-seven. House that can, right now, tells one, one family, and we're talking about seventy-plus structures. Uh, for uh this type of, you know, for our community. Is there incentive, does Dole, Dole look at a greater match that, does that? Factor into their metrics for saying, oh, wow, they're really are committed to this?
Um, yes, it would. And, but what I would tell you is that was not factored into your match, which we will definitely show is that you have about three million dollars in matches.
Got it.
So we're also going to highlight that beyond this, we're also putting three million dollars in land assets.
Okay.
Is that just the city land or is that city or district?
It's the two half blocks that are on the B O C C and then it would be the grant that's invited.
Okay.
Also, in this budget, as you presented, it's, it's a total four hundred thousand dollars match potential. Hundred thousand from the city, three hundred thousand from the county, it's actually in this budget. Uh, and so that's the contemplation, I guess, the county, the additional hundred thousand. Um, so.
And I will address. The, I would look at less as a match and more as, as a C. Money, because if you look, even if we, again, this is a very, very. Competitive grant and I'm not going to lie, we have a significant position as a public client if work is successful. I think the fact, if you, I. You guys have accomplished what it's taken to make it two years of accomplishing four months with the creation of regional housing authority to pass that I G A next quarter in the future. That is an accomplishment that. Should ring bells all up and down the road. But even with not getting that dollar grant, a four hundred thousand dollar match, you could leverage one of those properties. So instead of having to develop all three properties, you could develop one. And fifteen minutes or even split your property, which is forty minutes, is still a monumental project to allow the development. Pursue. And there will be other funds, there's energy prep funds, for instance, that you can target one site with. Uh, the development fund, if they are not successful with this, because, you know, the special districts are going to go after this one. There's other grants out there, but to your point, an additional match would allow that development that could even more flexibility.
So, I'm sorry, what is the school district meeting that you're going to?
Is it, uh, I mean, is it the second?
So that's fine, man.
No, go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm just making sure. So at this, today, at our, our council meeting this evening. We're thinking about this contemplating for a resolution in the future to like, to, to say, hey, we're going to contribute in fiscal year twenty-three budget for this match. Before I get on to my second point, this is why I think it's really important to have some strategic messaging and maybe a joint press relief. With the board of county commissioners, because if we actually had something to highlight. How important this regional hi- housing authority is in what we've done and get it through the right channels. So Dola knows this before we get to the grant cycle, we can seed that message out in front. To say, wow, they are really making a big contribution. I mean, I, like, if they're getting hit with a, just an application, just like everybody else. It's just an application like everybody else, but if they can hear it. Multiple times before we get, we get, before they get that application, I think we're kind of greasing the skits. The second point I have, and back to um. This additional match, we do have a motion specifically for our annual contribution for the regional housing authority. I think that's where I lost it.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so the two-way funds, so we went through the two-way funds, the, the, the piece that is obligated as of today, and may I please help me along?
Uh, I'm going to go with this in just a second.
Why, why, why you go ahead?
Well, you know, Lori and I and uh, we're some numbers, now we have to, we have to speculate on, on what we think income from two is going to be. Uh, we originally thought it was going to be two hundred and fifteen, uh, we think now it's probably two forty, maybe more, but, but we really don't know. Based on that, uh, the tourism panel, we get ninety-three thousand, six hundred. Uh, we have seventy thousand committed to the housing director and then we have forty-two hundred dollars in cost to meet this. Uh, that's a hundred sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred, which would leave seventy-two thousand, two hundred. Uh, Michael ran it down in terms of this, because we don't actually know. Uh, and so I asked Michael, I said, why would we do that? What, what if we have other needs for that money? And he said, okay, then the housing authority then becomes the passenger. For other needs, if you have the need, you would apply those to the housing authority against money's available. And I don't know if those are the needs of the, you know, other, other grant matches, other, you know. Um, and so I, I found that a palatable idea, I guess is the best way to put it. I think. I think if we put all of our, all, basically, all the rights and won't ask, you know, you know, put it that way. Put all of our trust in the housing authority that is going to oversee housing needs throughout the city and county. I, I felt like I was okay with that, but that was the, the, the primary question was, is that we want to do.
And that's to really leverage lots, right, basically. Uh, the ability, the flexibility that the housing authority has, is that my reading there right?
Well, it also be, uh, so it would. And and real quick, on, I, I would answer your question about, at one, one point, which is really important is that remember that the city has two votes on that board. So that's, that's the other reason of functionally doing this is that we spend this funds, the board, whenever they would spend funds, you would have two city, two city votes and three large members. The answer to your question is beyond, it's not just leverage of costs. It's the programming, so the ministry across the lotteries, et cetera. What I would tell you is that once the programming and our, our beyond, all the starts are starting to housing, that's going to bring in additional revenue. And create even a more functional housing authority to be able to offer additional programs like. The biggest one is down here, it's like, right now, home buyers who are a hundred percent a buyer are missing out thirty thousand dollars debt notes.
So to Max's point then, wouldn't it make sense to maybe allocate more funds for administrative reasons? Uh, other than land, because obviously we use three million, it's quite a bit. But if we also say, you know, we're going to be successful in administrative capacity as well, because we're. I don't know, donating some amount that I don't know of right now, but. Um, increasing that match, um, just to reassure that, like. Administratively, this is going to work out, would that also help, or?
You know, I think, yes, I, I think additional funds that are seen funds to get the, how we know housing authority. That is going, where I see that money coming from these banks is about is development property. I mean, you have a project, more of a, the, where, where, sorry, I'm going to call it. What is it called?
Real yard.
Real yard, thank you. I mean, there is potential that that project might need some gap funding. That, that project could cover the regional housing authority. And if they, the development committee, their foundation, work could actually assist in some capacity of that. Beyond that, I can tell you right off of that, there are certain things that, that make development happen, like surveys. Uh, geo tech studies, et cetera, that are going to be required to, to really expedite this, these types of things. That you can put into the dollar grant, but if you're saying, we're so ready to do this, well, uh, that we're, we're going to, we're going to go out and survey. We're going to get ahead of the curve, all this. And you know, you have with the site analysis, those are the types of things that, not just for this grant, but for future grants. Show funders that you guys were really committed to doing the housing. And I, I'll use one last quick anecdote. In town of Preston, dude, we passed a short-term rental tax that. Uh, up until that point, I was doing about sixteen units a year. Uh, that was all I could do with the hundred fifty thousand dollars I was allocating and always leverage other grants. But three hundred thousand dollars that passed, I don't know, sixteen a year, about twenty-five a year. And we only had actually like, I mean, it's only an extra three hundred thousand dollars, but that money I was able to leverage. X, but basically ten times. So those, I wouldn't put past our that C money, because that really allows. Your development committee, committee, which would really take flight, and you have land assets sitting out there that can generate seventy, eighty. Uh, so it's not like we're sitting here and saying, let's go to the next project. You, you know, regardless of the dollar grant, the site analysis and, and this, and this time we spent the last one month, said you love regardless of the door crack.
Man, I, I do want to say something. On page seventy-one of our packet, it is asking us to move a proposed motion to. Add our a- annual contribution through this two-way. I, I, I'm just going to send, and of course, I'm just one city council member. I am not prepared to make that decision. The only reason why is because two-way also had some language in there. And I don't remember it exactly, so I don't have, this is the information I'm missing. Is that it said something like the, the funding received from this could also assist other community opportunities, right? There was this other piece to it that wasn't just for housing and the tourism panel. There is something else in there.
Can we pull that up?
I don't necessarily want, and if that's the case, I mean, I'm not saying to, to not contribute. Funding, because I know this is important, but I just want to make sure that we're not just sliding the entire pie over. When there's an opportunity that we, we have for other community benefit as part of two-way.
Any language that wasn't associated with housing, associated.
I can't remember the language and that's why I'd like to know.
Yeah, the, the mayor and I were just looking at it and we were trying to decide, uh, what was the strategic way to. Budget the money for that very reason, is it is restricted. So I'm going to send the. I'm sending the ballot language to our deputy city clerk so she can pull it up.
And I guess a clarifying question is, this is the proposed motion for the timing for this application, right, not a permanent?
Yeah, so, so, no, big question. What we're asking for tonight, there's eight, so your, your, your legal council did a legal review of the I G A. Um, there was actually, the only comment that, that came back that was substantial was, uh, that I. Guess come in and rejected was the, uh, Christian has, didn't like the way the more language and terms would be in some of the initial terms. But both the B O C C and council edited that for about an hour. So I was like, no, 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 we're going to keep that. Uh, but beyond that, none of the changes that the, that the county legal council and the city legal council put back.
We'll, we'll see what you think. So review this and ask Christian about, about the language.
I think it's on the first page.
Uh, it's. Did I send you the ordinance or the resolution? The ordinance. Okay, let me, let me, I'm sending you the resolution right now. The ordinance, okay, let me, let me, I'm sending you the resolution right now.
Both you have the language developed by the general.
Yeah, I think it's.
But, real quick, to answer, what we're asking for tonight is, is the last section of the IGA is funding, and it is, it is permanent. So to your, your question is, what are the financial contributions? And I think another, one other thing that I would propose to think about as you consider this, and again, we're not looking for a decision tonight, but as you think about this, is what also happens if the regional housing authority is successful with additional funding? Is there, is there the ability that, that you put into language that, that the annual contribution would then be considered? I would tell you that the, the initial terms may be helpful.
Time of, we need to spell.
The middle, if you start, it says the city of Lethal. It's right in the middle of the paragraph. All revenues derived from such accommodation tax be collected and spent for the purpose of funding affordable and community housing, affordable and community housing programs, and any related lawful municipal expenses.
I think it was that affordable and community programs piece.
Housing programs, yeah.
I, so far away, I can't, like.
I do, I do see your point because there's, there's a little piece in there that left the door open for, for a bit, I'm not sure why, but that's, you might ask Christian, why would it left that door open? Please.
It was because. Oh, can you come up, just come up to the microphone? Thank you.
It was because you were concerned that you were going to fill our way out of this problem in 10 years and then need to focus on homelessness or something else.
Okay, all right.
And that's where, to, to that point, is that community housing programs could be used for, you know, homelessness or, some sort of relief for, you know, folks who are facing evictions when it comes to, you know, you know, helping out with that type of rental assistance, and on and on. So I just.
But this isn't the amount not to exceed, so it doesn't have to reach the amount we come up with, is that right?
Correct. It just means that if you, if the tax collected is over $300,000, we have to give anything over $300,000 back. So it's up to a maximum. The ballot language is up to a maximum, wasn't it?
Just for the first year, just for the first year, not in subsequent years.
We said, we said $300,000 because we thought that there was no way we could reach that, and that was important, to never reach that number. Otherwise, anything over that number would have to return to 160 people that we had taken tax.
I mean, tonight's motion, contributions and amounts that not to exceed, whatever, okay, right?
And that also, that's a lot anyway, in terms of, of if we decide that we want to use 10,000 of it for something else, then we could possibly give it. I, I still think that what, what Michael discussed today made me feel much better that, that all housing issues would be, would be part of the housing authority, and I think I'm okay.
So can I ask you a question that might hit some of these points I max brought up? Would the housing authority potentially be involved in creating prevention programs such as rental assistance locally, like the U N C A application we had previously? Would that be something that could potentially exist under?
Yeah.
Okay, and what about to rights? Right? Issues, so.
Yeah.
So it sounds to me like the, the two A funding would fit the shoe, though I don't, you know, if it's a to not exceed amount.
Let me, let me offer, because I, let me offer a friendly suggestion because I understand what happens, and to Chris's point, like, we'll have to go the way it happens. But seriously, one, one idea that I think would be important in the draft, like Christian and Chris' draft tool, is that the funding, the two A funding, this, in additional housing, additional funding stream is secure. And I think that will allow then, the council and BSCC, because the BSCC is also putting in an annual contribution as well, and the goal is to make this a functional body on the side, right? As some board directors, et cetera, so that if it does achieve getting its own funding stream, then at that point, you can A, go back and look at what successes they have to A money, and then B, also reassess that there are any programs that haven't fit with the regional housing authority that the city might be able to.
Tracy, yes, please.
Actually, I have a couple of comments. Um, the budget that we're looking at for 2024, the city is carrying the whole budget. The county is contributing $26,000 and we're contributing 170, is that correct?
That number, that 100,000 was adjusted after I spoke with Mary, 70, but you are correct, so it would.
Why, why are we carrying the whole burden for 2024?
That's the two A funds, so.
Two A is a city tax, it's a city tax. It's not a county tax, and it should be benefiting the city. So I'm just wondering why the county, why we are funding the burden and wanting to give the entire two A, when we should be able to use some of that money for our own programs within the city? I guess I'm just not agreeing with that whatsoever. And also, is there no opportunity for a DOLA grant in 2024 if we get one in 2023?
So I'll answer the first question first. I think that is not the criteria of this because it's a regional housing. It's a regional housing authority, and in fact, all the projects we've got that are in the city. So the regional housing authority, the development property, is fundamentally in the city. So your regional housing authority is a board that is not just looking at, it's not a county interest board, and in fact, good planning to tell you, you don't want to build a formal housing out in the middle of nowhere, you're gonna have to build this infrastructure, and it's not the city's limits. So I think, and I'll be very blunt, I think the city is going to see the windfall of any housing development on property taxes, et cetera, because that's where we would want to locate a formal housing. So that's, so I don't, I wouldn't look at that budget and say, it's county. I was looking at it as the city is where the housing needs to be. So that's my answer to that. The second question was, sorry, can you repeat that second piece?
Is there no opportunity for a DOLA grant in 2024 if we get one in 2023?
I think the quick answer to that is that the, that this DOLA grant in particular that we're looking at is the one that, at least that's a fix then. Now, the DOL, D O H has seen a windfall, I shouldn't, wrong word, but they have a huge surplus of funds because of ARPA the next three years. So whether or not they do an additional program will, will be there. But as of today, their, this program, the House Bill 1271, is not intended to go on to next year. I certainly hope because of the amount of patients we're gonna see on this program that they consider a second round, but that is not a given.
But I would also say, to Tracy's point, chasing those grants would be the job of the housing authority. We just, you know, we have the advantage to chase, chase the money in the city of Lethal.
And quite frankly, I don't think it's something that we should be focusing on. I think we have way more pressing issues that require votes rather than chasing grant money, nor do we have the expertise as being part of a nonprofit, Jesus Christ.
Mayor? Yes, go ahead, Sean.
I do not understand, Tracy, where you said 170,000, I, can you, I don't understand that.
Near 2024, we're carrying 170,000 in the county's, contributing 26,000.
This, this was originally, the letter was actually, what she's looking at says 100,000. I changed this in here for your benefit because the mayor gave me updated.
Okay.
So Tracy, Tracy, what I just pulled is that that's 100,000 was adjusted in their packet or the form I'm looking at from the mayor's new numbers of today. 100,000 in this packet, it says, it's the same.
From the conversation today with the mayor, right?
Yeah. So we, when I originally put this out in the packet, we had kind of a really rough guess, and then we were able to chase that Friday into that, so that 100 got tested.
I'm sorry, it's hard to hear you. How did these numbers change?
Yeah, so the number that has changed that you're looking at, at 100,000 in 2023 and 2024, after talking to the mayor, that two A will lower, is actually 70. So it was, it was brought down to 70 to reflect more accurate data that we got, actually, after.
But the county didn't offer any more money today in their meeting?
No, the county's, the county's counter to that is putting in 300,000 as the initial match.
So we're putting in 270 this year, or next year.
The county, you can see that the county grant match is 300, whereas the city is only 100.
Plus the 100 you've got for two A, plus the 70 for Jackie's salary, so.
Yeah, so the county commissioners' response to that was, but 300 in the match.
And she still, it's 100 for two A, which is, which is, has changed to 70 both for 2023 and 2024. As of right now, we, we don't know what the numbers are actually, but we have to have some sort of a base consideration.
Mayor, I, I'm gonna just say that as a point of order, and you know, I like process. When we got this agenda, it was to have a discussion and presentation for 9B for the city financial contribution. I did not think that we were going to have a motion in regard to this. It says that we have a motion that we're doing this right now.
Actually, what needs to happen tonight is direction of the material legal counsel to draft what you want the IGA to say. Because right now, we couldn't have a motion because the funding section of the IGA, as you're having.
So we need to have, we have to formulate the IGA, but I'll be honest, like, I'm still not comfortable with just sliding all the money over to the, as much as I support the regional housing authority and believe that perhaps our contribution is going up, we haven't even gotten through a single year, once again, a single year of collecting revenue from our two A. What does that mean? I mean, I think we're, once again, jumping the gun and saying, all right, well, let's just get, let's just slide it all over when, when we're thinking about other housing programs.
Okay, I, I would respectfully disagree, and I would agree with you probably, yes. But having had the conversation today, I feel like the housing authority is the proper repository for all housing issues going forward as a regional housing authority with both city council and, and county representatives on the board. I think the money would be handled appropriately across a lot of different housing needs. So that, that, I mean, I'm sorry.
If the IGA expressly speaks to those types of, you know, what their responsibilities are as a regional housing authority, but I mean, I want to make sure that, that language is resonates.
Christian.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, Tracy, why?
Respectfully, the city has a housing project coming up in phase two, and Laura has a housing project underway, so they're not through the regional housing authority? Are we just punching those and saying, oh, we're not gonna help them out whatsoever?
It has occurred to me that, that, that the project in phase two may very well be something that should be under the roof of the housing authority. But that's only occurred to me just recently because the housing, because the city has a tough time divesting itself of property. It, it may be, just like the urban renewal authority, the property of the urban renewal authority then, then can, can be divested to the Chaping Housing Trust as, as appropriate. And so it may never be appropriate for the city to have land that then is going to be used for housing, because if you ever have to sell that land, now you have a problem, so.
But we don't know right now what that looks like. We just don't know.
But what we do know, if there's a regional housing authority who can handle this, then that's the way forward.
I, I think that Tracy and Max's point is that we don't want to potentially restrict the funds of something that we don't know how it's gonna play out and how much funds that will be for, like, for example, the Laura Board, right? Which I agree with. Also, I think that it's very important that this succeeds. And I don't see why we couldn't just reach a compromise of, let's go with the original amount and keep that 20 extra that was left over as the, you know, compromise position of, this funds will keep for our lower funding in case we need it. And if we don't, maybe we make a generous donation to the U R A, or to the regional housing authority funds.
I, I think those are all great thoughts, and I just want to, I, you had your legal councils who have, who have been drafting this. This is the last section of the direction. So one thing that I do respect, Max, I do respect your comment on what, you know, we're in year one, what is next? What, what I think, and I thought this as Chris does, I think we could draft to, to the, even if, even if this is a commitment to point, we're waiting, we can draft it, because that's the whole purpose of the IGA, is to not restrict impermeability of funding of the city. And, you know, to be quite honest with you, I completely respect that. What I would suggest, either one of two things. One, we draft in 2024, the contributions are on the 2024, between the city and county looking at that, and this for year 2025. Or I would also offer that, the way I would actually look at this is that if the regional housing authority secures additional fund, additional funding stream, that, that we would revisit the two A contribution. So either one of those, I think, is very easy to draft to in this IGA, and that's kind of why we're here tonight, is to give our, to give the city, the council, the county, the council a direction of how you like to draft that. So that comment is spot on in kind of direction.
So, I mean, to your point, it sounds like it would make sense to keep those funds temporarily in hopes that they'll be able to pass a sales tax, because they will agree that property tax is probably not the way to go, but some type of percentage sales tax to get that revenue coming in to subsidize those seven, two A funds, so that we can use it for the other boards. I, I feel hopeful. Obviously, it's still possibility, up, left to possibilities, but I feel like that's a good place to leave it personally. I think that gives us a leeway of saying, in the future, we want these funds back to work on whatever projects we see fit, county, as well as, you know, we need to get this off the ground. I think the sooner the better. We've been hearing stories about the tragedies going on with people buying properties and using them for development rather than keeping them for people to long-term rent or whatever it is. So I agree with Greg in the sense of this is urgent, we should allocate as much funds as we can, and 70 does kind of fit perfectly within the thing.
It's up to the last 70 also.
Yeah.
Which gives me a couple of this one. So, I mean, I, you're quite resonant with me. I feel like, you know, more and more, sort of, I feel more and more, we really need this housing authority off the ground. And there's not a lot of money on the front end of this. Maybe, maybe if we pass a half a percent, you know, sales tax, and now we, now the housing authority has a million dollars a year, then all this, you know, becomes pretty good. And, and if we write in the IGA, which I, I think I liked, that this would be revisited year over year after the first year, we commit to the first year, and then, then in the second year, that we revisit the IGA based on the reality, financial reality, what's everybody think? Is that a reasonable way to approach it and ask staff to, to write the IGA appropriately?
Mayor, if I could kind of make a point in your response to Casey's comment.
I I'd rather not do that right now, but thank you. Um, I'd like to hear from Christie Ari at this point about the direction of the I G A. And if, in her opinion, that's a good approach.
It's been a little hard to hear you guys, Mayor, so I'm going to do my best to reiterate what I have heard and the question that you just asked before I give you an answer, okay?
Please.
Okay, um, so you are asking, um, or your proposal is to set out. Um, an amount to contribute to the regional housing authority for the first year, and then you want to revisit the I G A. After that first year to basically reevaluate how much the city will contribute in future years. Is that what I'm hearing?
Based based on revenue stream, yes, that I think that's what everybody, that's what we've been talking about. There was some disagreement, but that's that's a general conversation.
Okay, um, so I I will let you know that as the I G A is drafted right now, um. You can see in your packets, there is that um version of the I G A that has clean draft city revisions. On July twelfth, twenty twenty two, highlighted in the header. On page twelve of that document, which is page eighty three of your packet. It there is a section four point five titled Other Sources of Revenue. And that says that the parties shall provide at a minimum funding for the authority for the first five full calendar years. Beginning on insert date here, uh, in the total aggregate amount of whatever it is for each year. Um, and then it goes on to basically say that the funding is subject to annual appropriation. And then the second part or subsection I of that section four point five. Um, shows where Lake County and the city of Leadville. Uh, annual contributions would be listed in the I G A, so um. Depending on the city council's direction tonight. Um, you know, we're looking for the amount that like, uh, you often saying, uh, that that the city would contribute to the regional housing authority. And if you only want to set the initial year's amount, then we would probably need to revise this section a little bit to say that. And yeah, so whatever your direction is there. Is okay, and I will take whatever direction you have.
What is the will of city council? Yes, that's.
I I just in our discussion before, section one point three functions or services of the authority. Shall have any and all powers, duties and rights and obligations set forth, and there's a list of them. One that the one that I would like to see added, if you're truly asking for them to do other community housing services. To add that language into that I G A, because that then could then assign those dollars to. Rental assistance or homelessness and maybe even have them as, you know, may include, but not as limited to such services as. Right? And have something in there because that's my concern is that. If if that's truly what the housing, if the regional housing authority is, or at least a function of the housing authority is going to be. And take it off our daily daily plate, right? Then that would be fantastic to add.
Chris John, did you hear that? Did you hear that clearly?
I think so. Um, council member for Gen Z, you were referring to section one point three.
So real quick of clarifying one point three. He was statutory reference. If you go to section, so the other programming, so we actually this programming is actually in section under powers.
Okay.
Uh, if you go to article two, I I. Uh, other programs of advanced portal housing.
So there is the housing and emergency housing services.
So that's actually, and then and then we decorate in other so that if future programming or whatever, so. Yes, if we covered that, uh, I would not mess and I'll leave that to legal, but that with this this section here supporting is a statute.
Okay, can't do anything there. It's too. Okay, well, I haven't.
It sounds like you have enough flexibility inside. I I don't have a chance to really, you know, we just.
No.
Sounds like enough flexibility to have for to cover a lot of bases. I don't know if it covers all bases or not.
I I think the other language would be flexible enough to cover the bases that we would see fit for the two A funds anyways.
You know, the only thing I would ask, I know you said one year, but because of it in like. August or July this year, one year is not, I mean, and I the regional housing already is going to be like one of the budget in one year, so it's that. My my suggestion would be, because it says five, we reduce five to two.
I'm I'm going to disagree. I mean, ba- based on the info we've heard from city council, I think it is reasonable to revisit it in year two. It may be five. Uh, you know, that's that, but I think it's a decision we have to resolve to ourselves. That's my opinion. What's on the list?
I think that makes sense.
So you just want one year?
Well, we want to, we want to, you know, we want the budget for year one, which is twenty twenty three in the I G A with the language that we will revisit. That budget in subsequent years.
You're saying, I say. Yeah, I was like, please don't have to come back and change.
This is for you, but this is for next year, yes.
All right. What do we want that dollar amount to be?
I I think we stick with with the budget that he has here, which is seventy thousand and plus seventy thousand. Uh, that that's our contribution of under two A. Actually, twenty five thousand, that is not actually from two A. It actually shows the two A budget, but thirty five thousand comes from the city and thirty five thousand to A. If you want, you know, get put deep into the weeds.
So and that's for the housing director position? Yes, okay, because there's two seventy thousand dollar amounts you're talking about.
Yes, it's confusing. Uh, and then the hundred thousand dollar.
Hmm, it's the hundred thousand's down to a seventy.
No, 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 it's a separate. There was a hundred thousand dollar city match, should we be granted? But that money would not be due until twenty twenty three.
It's only received the grant. If we didn't receive the grant, then we're only out just seventy thousand.
For the position.
It just is a kind of a clarify on that hundred thousand in the third back, we would have some separate resolution of supporting a court grant.
Yeah, let's let's. We we need to come to a conclusion, or else we could have your actors for seven minutes.
You said ten minutes.
I'm trying to remember. Tracy and from Dana, it looks like we've lost Dana. I want to hear from Tracy before we give direction to to staff.
Okay, I have I have one question. If we're sharing the cost of the executive director, one third, one third, one third, why is the county only paying twenty six thousand towards that? Um, salary.
Yeah, the original projection for cost was a hundred and five thousand dollars is a wrong projection. Uh, the the budget cost was ninety six thousand, uh, and so they're twenty six. I think they're thinking along the lines that since they're one of the three hundred thousand, uh, whether that a hundred thousand, which is the original agreement, each of us was built a hundred thousand. That that they felt like that was more than offset against the the cost of the. I'm, you know, I was speaking to the county at this point, but I but that's what I understood in the conversation.
And and that's what I understood as well, watching, and I did watch a part of that video that you guys had this meeting. My understanding is that that line of the two hundred extra thousand is for the subsidy of the. Top two A costs, is that?
Jeff, is that is that a correct assumption about the council chair?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then my second comment, and I'm just going to make this comment because I do hear that there's a commissioner in the room. Is that the reason there's no affordable housing in the county is because the commissioners refuse to pass an inclusionary zoning bill. For the county, and so that's why it's all coming to the city. Um, so I'm just going to make that comment. Um, but I would agree to a one year provision that we revisit in the second year. And I also want to point out that based on the sales tax that we get for accommodations versus the accommodations tax. We are not collecting what we should be collecting because that's a one to one ratio almost. So there is a problem with how much we are collecting and we should be a lot more. And I don't know where, how we solve that, but just so you know, we should be collecting a lot more than we are.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we feel as a city council, we have, uh, given a verbatim clear direction to staff? Chris John, do you feel okay about the direction we have given you at this point?
I would really appreciate a motion from you guys to give direction specifically on what you would like to have. Uh, the amount um in the I G A and the number of years um that the city will contribute that amount in the I G A.
It's the dollar.
The dollar.
Or is it two hundred and forty thousand?
Well, it depends on how you want to parse it out. There's seventy thousand of.
I see the seven.
Seventy thousand and there's a hundred thousand, which is a grant match if we receive the grant.
So is that included in our proportional shares of funding or not?
So is it two hundred and forty thousand?
It's two hundred and forty thousand if we get the grant, so.
We.
I I think we can, I would do simple one of this by saying the twenty twenty three budget as presented. Will be in the I G A. Is that is that a reasonable approach? The budget, the budget city might get read or read to.
We, I think after this, we're going to have to take a break because my head's starting to.
I I totally agree with you.
But I guess. I guess the point, Mayor, and I apologize because this is where we make the sauces, where this is where we make the big bucks here, right? But the but isn't the hundred thousand dollar match going to come out of our general fund with a hundred and forty thousand dollars come out of the two A? Okay. So is it two separate issues? It doesn't matter where the money's coming from. We have to commit a dollar amount.
Yes.
In the I G A, it doesn't matter if it comes from two A or wherever.
Sure, okay, then it's two forty is what you're saying.
That's what it looks like to me.
It could be if we receive the grant, yes.
Yeah.
I feel better keeping the two things separate in case we don't get the grant.
But but they are separate because that's how they're separated in this budget.
And on top of that, it's up to, so it's not a forced. Balance now, so if we don't get the grant, then we just don't do the one hundred thousand, and that doesn't matter because it's enough to motion.
It it's a budget, budget item as a grant match. If you don't get the grant, there's no grant.
Yeah, I mean, it's world. I I think we could, I mean, if I may, um.
I'm going to adjourn motion.
Go, Christian, go, Christian.
Oh, boy. Uh, council member Luna Land moves to approve the city's annual contribution to the Leadville County Regional Housing Authority. To be an amount not exceeding, not to exceed two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the twenty twenty three budget here. It's not worth personal.
I'm still questioning because the second seventy thousand is coming in twenty twenty four.
No, this is what happens both in twenty twenty three and this one here. All we're saying is we revisit twenty twenty four. Um, bas- based on, you know, the need, yeah. I I I think I I just have a suggestion. I think it would be better to put in in the motion. Uh, that we are going to adopt the budget as presented uh tonight um for twenty twenty three. That budget to be revisited in twenty twenty four, the entirety of the budget in that sense.
Council member Luna Land wants to amend.
I'm I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. It it would, um, I I can't see the budget and that, um, I don't know what that says.
I I don't think that's important. What is important is.
Well, if I'm going to put the amount in the I.
In the I G A, as do I.
Okay, I will try.
Well, I mean, we we have a right of process and and you will have it as well.
Okay.
So the motion is, I amend the motion. Uh, geez. Um, to align with the budget presented to us at the days of nineteen. July nineteenth meeting. Um, with the expectation we will be revisiting this budget in twenty twenty four.
No, sorry, Henry. Thanks, Mark. Uh, is there any discussion? Then I have a little call, please.
Councilmember LaRudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Land?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember for Gen Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Lemon?
Yes.
The. I was going to say the motion to amend passes with. A vote of. Six in favor, none against, none abstaining, and one absent.
But we're going to take a ten minute break. Meet you back here.
Making sausage. Let's get that.
Christian. He made these.
Yeah.
Okay, we are back online.
Oh.
Oh.
Thank you. Where are we?
We are on, uh, agenda item ten, resolutions and ordinances.
Okay, we have, this is regarding order seven seven, so is it twenty twenty two in order of repealing. And reenacting chapters fifteen point oh four, fifteen point oh eight, and fifteen point one succeed of Ledville's code. To adopt by records, the twenty eighteen international building code, and we'll go any further than that because Anne. Uh, who is the director of of. I don't even know what this, they changed, they changed this, you know, it's not building, it's not the way that you see the work with us.
So I'm I'm the director, I'm the director of maybe development.
Um, Anne is going to make a presentation to us about the adoption of the twin code and possible exceptions. What she's done, Craig would like to speak to city council on on that adoption as well and give him an opportunity. So thank you, Anne, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Sounds great. Um, so I do have a quick presentation I did at two panel meetings. Um, and also at a training session. And as you said, I'm also the co official through the uh joint I J between city and county to administer the. So that is basically, um, the reason that I'm working with this work to the city council. And so I've worked with the board review, who also serves as your board of appeal. And our code expert shoots code to do this code revision. Um, so the next slide, um, explains what precipitated basically the work that started in two thousand nineteen. I just want to make sure that if anyone can see the presentation once I start. Okay, can you see the presentation, Tracy?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so the um state of Colorado is a home rule state, which allows local jurisdictions to adopt building codes. However, there was legislation in two thousand and nineteen through House Bill nineteen twelve sixty. Uh, whereby legislation was passed that required jurisdictions to pass one of the three nearest energy codes. So that would be the fifteen, the eighteen, or the twenty one. Uh, we are currently, um, through the I G A with the city and county residentially running the two thousand and twelve energy code. Um, and commercially. residentially running the two thousand and twelve energy code um and commercially we're under the two thousand and six. So we are, are, I currently not compliant with this with uh legislation and that was really what precipitated this work. On the next slide, um talks about, um just lists out all of the different codes that are being adopted through uh this uh proposal. One aspect that's really critical in the city is that we are also adopting the existing building code. This takes into account a lot of the historic and aged housing um within the city. And this is critical because it allows um exceptions and consideration for that house of stock uh which might have some challenges in meeting some of the code requirements, some of the requirements of the eighteen code. So of this list of uh I codes, uh the existing building code has significance to the city. Um, the next code, or the, excuse me, the next slide talks about the kind of the significant changes and highlights in this new adoption. One thing I would mention is that the resolution and ordinance that exists right now for both the city and the county largely is not changing. We went through, we did some grammatical corrections, we corrected some errors, formatting items, but largely um the ordinance and resolution looks very similar to uh what it has looked like um when we adopted the two thousand and twelve code. Um, but some of the items that have changed are the energy code. Again, this is um a state requirement. Um, and then we've also looked at radon drains. Radon is an increasing concern um for homeowners. And if we require um radon drains at the time of new construction, it is a much easier and um affordable um proposition than looking to have to come in and mitigate radon when we find acceptable unacceptable levels. Um, so that is a new change that's being proposed. A work that exempts from a permit, that's just been cleaned up a little bit. It's still pretty much the same. There's a whole lippy of things that don't require building permit. We also try to work very hard to make small projects um not require building permits so that people can get home repairs done very quickly without having to go through an extra uh layer of burden in acquiring a building permit. Uh, so that's changed. The other is that we have uh now require residential units to be EV ready. Um, that doesn't mean anything more than the capability within the electrical panel. Again, a much easier thing to do at new construction than to retrofit after that. Um, the other items are certification for contractors. I'll get into that in just a minute. And then these, and so the next slide will start kind of breaking down those items. The first is the, the energy code. Again, this is a mandatory requirement. Um, so not a lot of leeway here, but what we really wanna highlight is that we are trying to, or we are actively bringing online free uh workshops and opportunities to educate the local industry and property owners on how to maneuver these changes and requirements within the new adoption. The next slide um talks about the radon drains. So we need to adopt what's called appendix F. It's an appendices to the, the I codes which covers the radon drains. The next slide talks about what's exempt from requirement of permit. And um we just went through and IBC reflects commercial builds and IRS believes the residential code. And we have this magic two hundred square feet but number that reflects things like when they're gonna um replace drywall inside and um when you're gonna replace windows that are, you don't have to do any structural changes to. Um, one item we did have to highlight is um we are seeing, we've always said that sheds under two hundred square feet do not require building permit as long as they are one-story and as long as they don't have any catalytic space. In this housing crisis that we are experiencing, we are seeing people come in and retrofit um sheds and facilities. Those need building permits. So just, we just uh uh clarify that a little bit. Um, there were also a whole list within both codes that um are exempt from this. So these are just a little of those highlights. The next slide um talks just, it's just the, the requirement to look to the future for um electronic uh and alternate uh fuels for, for cars, you know, something that I think that I heard the city talking about today as well. Um, so this just does not get overly sophisticated yet. It's just making sure that brand new residential construction is ready with the electrical panel. Um, the next slide, this is kind of a, a big issue. I'm not sure how much city council has, has heard complaints. Certainly we hear them often that um their constituents are coming to us and they feel as though um there has been a new trend that contractors, um some contractors, they're experimenting um things that they feel like they're not qualified, breaches of contract. And so we're hearing that the industry, uh while there are so much such a demand, we've kind of had an influx of, of some contractors that maybe are not um doing best practices and best standards. So we are going to elevate um contractor registration and now we have an educational certification requirement. This is not unlike many jurisdictions, um not only in our state, but all across the United States um that have certain requirements for becoming a registered general contractor. So we are now um going to require that certification at the time of registration. Um, but we are allowing a grace period. And so they have from now um from the adoption until the end of the year to be those certi- certifications. The certifications range in cost for about two to five hundred dollars. Um, they have continuing education requirements to them and the, um, some of those tests can be done online. Um, they can practice them online. So there's good access to them. We are providing the community the resources to know how to do this training. They don't have it and um access to the testing. So um we're hoping this will kind of elevate and add a certain layer of protection to the power. The next slide um talks about building permit fees. Building permit fees have not increased in over a decade. Two thousand and twelve was the last time that we looked at uh the valuations. Building permits are uh cost is based on evaluation of the project currently. We are valuing projects at a hundred and three dollars a square foot. Um, I'm sure that probably is astonishing, um knowing that the market rate is about three fifty to four hundred dollars a square foot.
Can you repeat that?
So, excuse me.
Can you repeat that?
So right now, uh when committing to building permit, we take your square footagees and we put them into formulas for this square footage, the single family home, decks, um garages, they all have a different first square footage amount. And single family residential homes are being valued at a hundred and three dollars per foot. We take that valuation and there's a slightly scale that we um then apply to the actual permit cost. So the valuations that we use are, you know, maybe a third of what the actual market value is that we're using to value these permits. So moving forward, we're going to um within the resolution, we are doing a price index that changes annually. So we don't have to do this very big catch-up like we're gonna do with this adoption. Overall, building permits are going to increase up thirty percent because of this teenager gap between the adoption. However, plumbing permits, mechanical permits, solar permits, and roofing permits will not change whatsoever. So all of those, which also support things like home maintenance, all of those foods are gonna stay exactly the same. So we're not looking to reference those just the cost of building permits um themselves. So um that will occur with this adoption, but then from here on out, this will be a price index and it's a nationwide index. It is not Colorado specific. It's a national um that we will then start valuing projects on. So I don't think it will ever match our market rate at all. Um, but it will, it will increase to a more reasonable price for the administrative cost of um processing your residential permits. Um, the next slide. Um, we talked a little bit about the Glenville Lake County Fire Rescue there during the town hall meetings and the presentation to the county, the fire department Glenville Lake County Fire Rescue had asked if we would consider within the adoption, um the code requires sprinkler systems in townhomes. This is a very difficult conversation. And when you look at jurisdictions, everybody has different requirements when it comes to sprinkling largely because of the cost that it adds to construction. Um, some, there is a bit of a debate over if you can use fire resistant construction, that you can use certain materials that are fire resistant that will afford um one and two hour separations. Um, so there might be some alternative methods over sprinkling. And so the, the Glenville Lake County Fire Rescue would say, if we cannot at this time consider sprinkling as an option in townhomes, would everyone agree in September that we come back together as a community and, and just think about the wildlife, or excuse me, wildland early game face companion? That's the book that's upon the screen. As we look at the wildfire protection things currently being done, the, the forest service, um fielding, um different partners about fire protection and it's actually looking at how do we mitigate and think about new construction with fire resistant um materials. So the board of commissioners have already, um, and the county have already adopted the two thousand and eighteen code series. And they have made commitment to getting back together in September. We are hoping that we all can use this collective uh collaboration and look at the, what's referred to affectionately as the UTE and um and talk about how we can look at the built environment being conscientious of um the natural environment and fire protection. So this has been going to, at this point, to be a future act, um but not on a pretty, and on a full schedule. Um, next slide, um talks about training and education. So we are working really diligently to make sure through a grant of Excel Energy as well as our um our code professional shoes code to bring forward a lot of free workshops to explain the energy code and to coach um contractors and property owners through the new requirements of lower load capacity. Making homes um tight and um not having energy losses. Um, heating, heating units, uh for instance, within new construction. So we have free workshops that we are providing and we're working to continue and bring forth to many of our time. We have information on our website that explains and, and free code access to all of these codes. We also um partner with ISC Education and um send out all kinds of information to all of the registered contractors about how to meet the new uh certification requirements. Next slide, um just talks about everyone that was involved, the board review, um are all, all of members are listed, the building department and staff, our co consultants and Glenville Lake County Fire Rescue. We all worked together to bring uh this proposal to you this evening. And um that pretty much sums everything up. I'm honored we lost time this evening and uh taking out questions, happy to hear those. But what I'm asking today as a council is to consider, uh this is frustrating for the ordinance we have um provided to Christiana, um the draft ordinance to adopt it, the code which will align exactly with her adoption that we can get on June sixth. I would just also mention that, you know, I'm really appreciative of this opportunity because right now we're administering two different order codes. One for the city and one for the county that, that are different. And so it will, it will just be a relief when we're able to just have people see this together. It also has to be legislative mandated. So those are the things that I'm driving these proposals.
Anne, we may have some questions. I'd like you, Craig, to speak to us and then have you come back up. That's okay. This is, I just wanted to say, this is not a public hearing, I'm, I'm, I'm the uh first, first hearing. However, Craig did ask to speak and so I would like to.
So Mr. Christian, the city council, um I am an aralong company in town, the Big Eden County, Salt County, Chatham County, Lake County. Um, the code was adopted in twenty twelve um by um Lake County and the city. You seem to be in here and I have seen it was adopted and it looks like the area has come back in the twenty eighteen code. Um, and what it is, is group A occupancies. Deputy Chief Boyle changed the limits of the occupancies for aralongs to a lower limit because some of them are sprinkled, as Anne mentioned, and there's all this confusion about townhouses and everything right into that. Should have been able to talk about that. And what they did is they tried to do, if most of the stuff to forty-nine or if it was forty-nine or more people, well, if the bottom of the code deals with what we call voiceback systems, which is meant for like stadiums or schools, gymnasiums and that, and that, that code is a thousand people or more, you have to put a voiceback system. In the code, it says that we have to put in a voiceback system in a group A occupancy if there's forty-nine or more people. Well, there's two, there's two things in the code and both of them are, we don't know if one hasn't been cross cut or not, but basically it's saying that if there's forty-nine or more people in a group A occupancy, get to a voiceback system. Now, voiceback system is extremely expensive. It's three times the price of a fire alarm. And um I think it's a hardship to the businesses of Red Bull to do that. So I think it's a mistake or it needs to be taken out of this adoption.
I would like to ask you because I, I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Okay, so the group A occupancy.
But the, the, the voices.
A voice, so it, it's called in the code, an emergency voice alarm communication system.
Voice alarm communication system.
Which is what in the industry we call it a voiceback system. So what it does, it broadcasts a voice message over a speaker system in the building and federal governments and lots of um high occupancy ascending areas like that because you can do the hurricane alerts, sh- shu- alerts, they do them in big schools and things like that. Well, a group A occupancy is an ascending occupancy, which is um like a restaurant is a group A occupancy. So just a small restaurant like um, so we'll put it in two, so just a small restaurant like the Baldwin Bar. When we did the, the um, the fire alarm at the Dolph Bar, they would have to put a voiceback system in the way the code is written at the moment because they have an occupancy over forty-nine people, okay? And then it's not sprinkled, but you know, that's, there's a, there's an option in the code if you that the fire alarm may require a sprinkler system, you know, but the code actually requires a sprinkler and A two occupancy over a hundred, but that's another thing. So what I'm querying is this particular piece in the code of forty-nine. Well, I can read it. I mean, it's a little confusing, but it says system initiation in group A occupancies with occupancy goal of a thousand or more. And it says activation on the fire alarm in group A occupancies with occupation load of a thousand or more should initiate a signal using an emergency voice alarm communication system in accordance with section nine, seven, five, one, two. Then underneath it, it says activation of the fire alarm in group A occupancies with an occupation load of forty-nine or more should initiate this, a signal using an emergency voice alarm communication system in accordance with nine, et cetera. So it's got both of them in there. So I'm asking which one is it? Is it over a thousand or is it forty-nine?
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking. What needs to be taken out? I'm suggesting that the forty-nine gets taken out because it's a hardship to the, to the people, to the businesses in Red Bull. That's what I'm suggesting.
I appreciate that. Anne, uh, do you have an opinion on this? And if so, could you relate?
Absolutely. So um I would uh suggest that um you, so Steve Boyle is the, the fire uh code official. Uh, I am the building official. So any revisions or changes to the fire code, um this has been presented to Steve for his final comment and this is what he's brought forward. So if a member or a contractor wants to ask for clarification on that or potential amendment to that, then um you can certainly bring that forward and if this is like any other adoption, we could amend this. If Fire Marshal, since he's not here to speak to this, I don't believe Dan is either. Um, so, but he is the code official.
Um, so, but he is the code official, um, and we already have a jurisdiction on the fire code itself. So if, um, he finds that there is a clarification that needs to be made within that assembly occupancy. Um, then he, so I would just ask.
We can ask. Yeah.
An amendment, um, if you, and then have the fire code official, uh, reading that in that issue.
Let me ask you this. If we were to, to go through the motion tonight. And adopt, uh, the twenty eighteen I F C. Then could it be changed after the fact?
Yes.
It could be, or if we chose not to adopt the I F C tonight. And, 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 and then hear from the fire department, their, 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 uh.
This is just, this is, we can't adopt tonight. Tonight's first reading.
Oh, you're right. Okay.
Never mind.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Thank you.
It's, it's tomorrow.
Pretty close. Uh, no, so thank you. Yeah, I, I think that, uh, I, I appreciate Craig bringing that to our attention. Uh, was that considered by the county commissioners? Was this?
This is the first time that, uh, I believe this is, and this is the first time that we've heard.
On second reading, we will want clarification before.
Yeah, but we, we can, we can get with the fire marshal and get clarification on this before second reading.
Twenty twelve code, it's never been fixed since twenty twelve. I'm trying to get it fixed, but it was new code.
Thank you. Before second, before second reading, we will have clarification.
Once you adopted the code, it's quite difficult to change it, it's not easy.
Craig, thank you very much. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, I do have some questions for you, Anna.
Yes.
Uh, on radar, do we know what the, what the additional cost is for preparing a basement for radar?
Yeah, I, you know, I think that it can range, um, Cameron Malar did some research on this. And, you know, we're talking, um, eight hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. I think it's a minimal cost. Um, at the time, and it, and it, you, you could be a little more elaborate, um, but it is not, it's not a cost.
Okay.
When you think about a reconstruction.
Next question of the, oh, I'm sorry, Christian.
What would that be, what would that cost be compared to if let's say there was that, um, still in a basement?
So you have to bend that from, from ground to out through all the, dilated all the way through, uh, the, uh, top. Um, of a structure. So it can be significant. Um, you have to, to, um, create airflow. And so you could, um, I know some utility transactions have looked at several thousand. Um, or more to be able to put in, uh, reoperating systems. Um, and so in, in worst case, sometimes they will go undiscovered. Um, and so then you also have the risk of, of situation that hasn't, um, you know, that is occurring, no one's ever.
My thank you. The EV charging station, uh, charging capability. You're not asking them to actually run the wire or conduit just for the circulator box to be capable.
Correct.
Okay, wanted to check that. Uh, the contractor, right? Now, just, just, you know, so, so everybody's clear on this. I have actually gone in here. And said, we need to do something about contractors. We have contractors who are predatory. We have contractors who are incompetent. Uh, we have one contractor who's been fired by about half a dozen people in town. But so my question to you is, you talked about education. You didn't talk about enforcement. What enforcement capability is there for a contractor who's, who's, we'll call him misbehaving?
Absolutely. So you, we can take complaints, um, but they have, you have to, to keep in mind that some things are still matters. So if it's a contractual obligation, um, that a contractor has not met with a property owner. We really don't, we can't be involved in, in, in those situations. Um, however, contractors are required to sign an affidavit with us, which is basically a code of ethics. Um, and so in the event that they aren't, um, abiding by those. Those basic code of ethics on site. If they're continuously, um, not meeting the expectation of inspections. Uh, those are all reasons for us to consider withdrawing the registration. Um, also if they are not now meeting educational requirements that would hopefully then, um. I think we're also finding that there is a degree of just, um, incompetency. Um, in some of these situations. So we hope that this will also elevate. Um, their basic knowledge and ability to do this work for others. Um, and will also encourage and require them actually to do continued education, to be more knowledgeable about their industry. So, um, we'll have some control, uh, right in, in some areas. Um, but we will still not be able to come in when there's a, a dispute between a contractor or a contractor or a contractual, um, which is.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Can a property owner still be their general contractor?
Yes, they can. Um, however, um, we do, uh, we do a lot of handling and we do a certification setting at the front end. Um, of contractor, uh, self builds. Um, because there are, there are challenges in that. There are certainly advantages. And, and that's why, uh, we absolutely allow it. But there's also some challenges in some builds. Um, if somebody's trying to manage the, uh, building site, can, when they're states, they can only exercise that option. Um, if we, um, cannot be the how to. We can't educate people through the process of how to build their property or their, uh, their projects. So there may be, um, there's language within their research expectations and we have continued failed inspections. Um, they may reach a point that they need to, to consult with a professional. Um, so we do have some, uh, we set up, we set those expectations up more than any, but yes, you, you have to go to your own project.
Uh, my last question, maybe other questions. Uh, I need clarification on, on sprinklers. You know, uh, you know, you said, you said, uh, you know, condominiums or duplexes. Would that apply to a fiveplex?
Yes.
Share, share with all.
Is an I. So the difference being, um, you know, a fiveplex is an I B C build. And townhomes can be an I R C build. Um, duplexes, the one and two families are an I R C build. Fiveplexes are commercial. So when we start getting into commercial, we start, we, the sprinklers.
That be true of modular fiveplexes like Fayette West? Those are commercial builds?
Um, if they are fiveplexes, it depends on how they're set up. You know, it depends who you, so if you're saying townhomes, no, those are I R C builds. So I'm not sure. When you say fiveplex, are you saying another apartment complex?
No, it would be, it would be, it would be literally. Five townhomes, yes, thank you.
Townhomes are I R C builds.
All right, thank you. I don't want to confuse the issue. So when are sprinklers required in residential?
No, they are not currently.
Not even for over four thousand square feet? Cause that used to be every issue. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Anna? I, I do appreciate the clarity and I appreciate the people you have on your committee. Uh, you know, some experienced contractors in there. So that, that helps me feel better about this and. And in fact, we actually have a choice. Any other questions or thoughts? Tracy. Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion on first reading.
Councilmember Fregency moves to adopt ordinance number seven, series of twenty twenty two, and ordinance repealing and reenacting chapters fifteen decimals zero four, fifteen decimals zero eight, and. Fifteen decimal sixteen, other city level municipal code to adopt by reference in twenty eighteen international building code, the twenty eighteen international residential code. And the in twenty eighteen international mechanical code, the twenty eighteen international plumbing code, the twenty eighteen international fuels gas code. The twenty eighteen international existing building code, the twenty twenty national electric code. And the twenty eighteen international fire code, making specific amendments thereto. And providing penalties for violations there on first reading. I further move to schedule, schedule reading on the ordinance and the public hearing for city council's regular meeting on August two, twenty twenty two.
Number nine, seconds.
You get the word for the longest motion.
I like that.
There's lots of words and numbers and stuff. Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Tracy. You're muted.
Sorry, the spacebar wasn't working. Do we need to amend that to ask? For clarification on the fire code that Craig was talking about?
I don't know. What would you say, Laura?
Uh, I will. Ask Christiana. But I think it, that would be included in second reading if we were going to make any changes at that point. Christiana?
Yeah, I think we need to, uh, I think it's okay to adopt the ordinance as is on first reading. Um, and we can get clarification on that question in between now and second reading. And then if an amendment needs to be made, we can incorporate that into the motion on second reading.
Okay, and that's enough direction for you to, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Good, very good point. Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Loretta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynn Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency?
Yes.
May I lobby?
Yes.
The ordinance number seven, series twenty twenty two, and ordinance repealing and reenacting.
You don't agree though.
Thank you. Um, passed with a vote of. Six. Uh, six, sorry. Six in favor, none against, none abstaining, and one absent.
Thank you. Your patience and your presentation.
Eric.
Yes.
Could I make a point of order?
Yes, please.
Since her deputy city clerk is new, perhaps she doesn't know that it's a good idea to bury the. Who she asks for.
That, that is an excellent point of order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, typically the, uh. What we used to do, and I'm glad Tracy brought that up, we used to randomize vote. Uh, so that, so, so that.
There's a randomizer app that I used to use.
There's actually a randomizer app. And so, so the, the, the order of what city council votes would, would, uh, would bury every single vote.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Tracy. That's a wonderful point.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anna. Okay. Uh, next up, uh, ordinance eight, series of twenty twenty two, this is, uh, approving, uh. A third amendment to the regular, regular phase one plan unit development. Uh, this is first reading, this will change that lot, that point five nine acres from, uh, civic use to residential. Uh, in, in their, in their P U V. And that's, we need that order to go forward with the, uh. Uh, with the building of, of housing. Um. Tracy, any thoughts on that? I don't think we have a presentation by anybody, but.
Um, no, it's just that, um, time is of the essence for, um, getting those approved.
Great, thank you. This is first reading. Any questions, uh, from city council on what is trying to be accomplished here?
I believe Christiana has her hand up.
Christiana, yes, please.
I just wanted to point out for city council, um, that in the proposed ordinance. Um, for the, uh, changes to the setbacks, you can see the, uh, chart with the changes on. Um, a page of the council communication forum. It's page one seventy two of your packet. Um, those changes to the setbacks have been reviewed by Reed McCullough. And, um, he is the one who suggested that that would work for the planned development. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys know that.
Okay, thank you. And just for, I'm sure he knows Reed is, is the, uh, is the director of the chicken house trust. He's, he's been entrusted at work, uh, with building, uh, twelve months. Any thoughts? Questions? In which case I would entertain a motion for this.
Moves to adopt ordinance number eight, series of twenty twenty two, and ordinance approving a third amendment to. The rail yard at Leadville, phase one, planned unit development on first reading. And further move to schedule second reading and public hearing on this ordinance for city council's meeting on August second, twenty twenty two.
Doing the last seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency?
Yes.
Councilmember Loretta?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynn Elliott?
Yes.
May I lobby?
Yes.
The ordinance number eight, series of twenty twenty two. Has passed with a vote six in favor, none against, none abstaining, and one absent.
Thank you.
Should it be noted that's on first reading?
Yes.
Sure.
So the ordinance number eight, series of twenty twenty two, on the first reading. The vote was six in favor, none against, none abstaining, and one absent.
Thank you. Good catch. Uh, at this time, we have a mid-year cost of living adjusted.
Okay, so I, I talked about this little, a little bit at, uh, our last council meeting and. Uh, I'm sure you all are aware that, uh, cost of living has increased substantially in the staff report. I've put some numbers in which I think are quite. Um, some of it was familiar to me, some of it was very surprising, but cost of living is up nine point one percent from a year ago. The things that surprised me were the, the key indicators of things that had gone up. And, uh, as I said in the staff report, they are essentials. They're not really, uh, nice to haves, they're need to haves. They are food, shelter, and transportation are the key areas where cost of living has really gone up. I think, uh, the, one of the things that really surprised me, um. Was the cost of fuel. Uh, I'm trying to, yeah. So gasoline prices, uh, just shy of sixty percent for a twelve month period. So that's substantial. The last time that city, uh, employees received a raise was, um, at the end of last year. Many other municipalities are looking at doing a mid-year cost of living increase. I listed some of the municipalities that I had heard about from the, um, Colorado municipal league discussion list. I think there are probably many who have passed some since I did the staff report. But I also wanted to point out the county just passed a, um, mid-year cost of living increase and that. Couple of things I wanted to point out, that there are two options here. Option A is a four percent across the board increase for all city employees. And you can see under the fiscal impacts, I've, I've indicated what the impact of that would be. Option B is more along the lines, uh, or is along the lines of what the county did, which is a four percent increase. Uh, for those making over fifty nine thousand and for staff making up to fifty nine thousand, it's a five percent increase. So those are the two options. Uh, my recommendation is that. Council provide a mid-year cost of living increase for employees. I attached a chart, uh, that the county, uh, Tim Bergman actually was nice enough to send to me. About the Lake County labor supply and demand. And if you can see for the first time in, hmm, let's see, uh, three years. The number of, uh. Open positions outnumbers the number of unemployed people. So we are in a very, I mean, you know, in a very competitive market for keeping employees. And so I think this is, uh, would do a lot to alleviate the financial strain on our employees. We have a lot of financial strain on our employees. So I, my recommendation is that the council, uh, adopt a mid-year cost of learning adjustment, whether it's option A, option B, or. An option that the council proposes here this evening. And given the lateness of the hour, I'm just happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the council? Any questions for the council? I mean, I, we've talked a lot about this, Lauren and I, and my, my inclination is option. Just cost of one, four percent. But it's, it's just one, one update.
Can I, and, and actually, that reminds me, I do had, I did have it after our last council meeting. Every Wednesday morning, I have a department heads meeting, and I threw out this idea. And the department heads were unanimously in favor of the county's proposal. Feeling as though that the increase for our, you know, lower earning folks at five percent was, was worthwhile.
That's option B, right?
Correct. Yes, department heads were unanimously in support of option B. And I see benefits to both. I see equality of the four percent across the board. I think it treats everyone fairly. But I also see the point of folks who are making less than fifty-nine thousand seeing a greater increase. So.
Well, as someone who's making less than fifty-nine thousand, significantly less at that, I would say that a five percent increase to my pay would help me tremendously with costs of living. I'm lucky enough to live with my parents and not have to worry too much about the rental increases the same way that others do. But I still see the costs in gas and food. I mean, just the other day, I went to go get groceries, and it was like a hundred and sixty something bucks for not even a full week of groceries. And which, you know, I have a big enough family to where that makes sense. But it's it has a much greater impact that those lower level incomes, where it makes sense to accommodate them a little bit more. I, I don't think this is drastic enough to like push over anything. I think the difference is a little bit under ten thousand, is that right?
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand.
Yeah.
So I think that it makes sense, helps elevate those people a little bit more and be able to feel a bit more comfortable and potentially start saving once again instead of just living paycheck, paycheck.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
I see this is not a retention bonus, it's more of just a cost of living piece. And I'll be honest, I'm just so happy that as city government, we're able to have the flexibility to do this. Because working as the federal government, as just a normal G S employee, not a chance in hell would we ever get this before. In fact, I'm watching my, my amount of, you know, cost of living go up. But my, you know, staying flat, we do get a cost of living increase most years at the beginning of each year. That said, firefighters, received temporary firefighters and permanent firefighters all received twenty thousand dollars in bonus this year for retention. And that really, and I know this is in our discussion, that actually had a backfire result because those G S five employees that were trail crew people are just suffering, just like the firefighters are saying, I'm working just as hard as them, all blood, sweat, and tears, and they got twenty thousand dollars. And now we're losing the other side of the house saying, go pound sand. Why I'm being, you know, so I like the idea, it comes back to, you know, rising tide should flow all boats. And that said, though, I do feel that the lower income people are more affected. And so I think the four percent is more equality, or the five and four is more equity based. And I would vote in favor of, I believe that's option B, the five and four.
Sure.
I agree with Max and Christian on that. I would be in favor of option, option B.
I think it's the difference of fifty dollars, fifty dollars a month between the two. That four percent versus five percent, so I too in favor. Option B.
Thank you. Tracy?
A B for me.
Okay, then I would be also. This is a good conversation. So we are consistent, that we agree that we do want to do an increase, and that we all agree that option B is, is the proper way to approach it.
And that's great. And, and this is educational for the next item on your agenda as well. What this is, is it's just a motion, so you can see it's not a resolution or anything. You will see this in the supplemental budget that we're going to do in December. And that will be by resolution, that's where you officially, you know, bless the money. We're doing this now to make sure that we don't give a cost of living increase now that in December y'all think isn't a good idea. This was just to make sure council's on board with this now, and you will see it by resolution in the, included in the supplemental budget in December. So with that, Christiana, do we need a formal motion, or do you think that the voice vote of council is sufficient?
I think that the voice vote of council is sufficient.
Great.
A perfect question, right? But it takes effect now.
Correct. Oh, absolutely not. I'm just making sure y'all are okay with this, spending the money now and putting this in place. Not just doing it and then hoping y'all bless it in December.
You do have a motion in part of us, I think we should go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, that sounds great. We can do it that way.
Councilmember Lumela moves to approve the mid-year cost of living adjustment for the city employees under option B. Also.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Lumela?
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Mayor Lobbie?
Yes.
The motion to approve a mid-year cost of living adjustment for city employees under option B has passed, six in favor, none against, none abstaining, and one absent.
And just thank you for everything you have done to support the city employees. Really appreciate it.
Doing the hard work to put this together and doing the research, and so you may.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the regular urban renewal authority budget. The urban renewal authority has, has considered this and approved it. And now it's up to city council to agree to it. This also can be in motion. And then at the end of the year, there may be an additional supplemental budget, but we don't know. So for right now, this is a supplemental budget to get us through the end of the year based on urban renewal authority, currently perceived need of urban renewal authority function through the end of the year. It's getting it, it's less.
Right, same thing.
You know, some of us have discussed, and some of us, I don't know, everybody's been, has been able to attend all the urban renewal authority meetings. However, if there's any, any questions or discussion on this, please.
I just have one question on the, let's see, it looks like there's an administrator for twenty-four thousand dollars a year. Do you have an estimate of how many hours per week you think that might be?
No, Tracy had suggested that maybe somebody who would be appropriate to that job, Tracy?
Um, actually, the superintendent, school district superintendent thought that she might have somebody who would have some extra time and could help us out. But I haven't connected with her yet. But I was thinking it would be right now maybe twenty hours a month. Oh, I don't think it'd be per week. I think it would be like a chunk of time, and then another chunk of time, so if not real consistent weekly hours.
And the only reason I ask is, is that I may have somebody who would, would be interested and.
Great, I would love to hear about them.
Yeah, it just, it just came up today, and it may be something where we can cobble together enough hours for someone to is, so that we cobble together enough hours so someone can make it work. So, yeah.
Great. And I assume there'd be a little ramp up time there too, so to.
Basically, the twenty dollars an hour would pay for about two hundred hours through the end of the year, over six months. That actually be about thirty-three hours a month. But I mean, it's going to vary, this is such a wild ass guess to begin with. But at least it gives us something to work with.
Yep, okay.
Any thoughts on this? In which case, I would entertain a motion to approve the supplemental budget for the urban renewal authority for the balance of twenty twenty-two.
Hill moves to approve the supplemental budget for the Leadville Urban Renewal Authority. Twenty twenty-two, ninety-six thousand dollars.
Two minutes seconds. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence?
Yes.
Councilmember Lumela?
Yes.
Mayor Lobbie?
Yes.
The motion to approve the supplemental Leadville Urban Renewal Authority budget has passed with a vote of six in favor, none against, none abstaining, and one absent.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. That's pretty much the end of the agenda. We have a company's player. I'm just going to mention on, prior to gathering those Leggins, having it a bit, and not be not be further apart from, I think it's eleven till two o'clock. Okay, and it's a festival. So anybody who would like to come out there, just say hi. There'll be plenty of tables and topics around you, around the cabin. Excellent. Anybody else that has been on this, this play? I haven't begun on this. Which is a Tuesday, because I don't know if it's an important Tuesday. Well, it's a city council meeting, a couple of weekends, so. Okay.
That's, and I think we have uh, the vote on whether to opt out of the family program, we have that tentatively scheduled for that meeting as well.
I will try to make it, but ahead of time, there's a good chance that I won't be able to, I'll be driving.
Okay.
Mayor, I will not be making it to the second as well, because I will be in New York for my parents' fiftieth wedding anniversary.
That is so cool. Anyway, any, any other supplier? Here in, uh, marriage report, not a chance, council reports.
No, thank you.
One quick one, I will be leaving for circle on October. So it's been too much to handle both city council and full circle, but it's both intensely mentally driven jobs. So I've decided to put attention to a more physically active job, as a day job.
Very cool.
Just for mental health reasons. It's, you know, for the heavy heart, of course, I loved working there and I loved supporting the community. But I also need to make sure that I don't burden myself.
They're going to miss your passion. I, I, from everything you've told us, the emotional train has to be significant.
It is intense. You can definitely get, you can definitely get there.
Well done.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, thanks for sticking with us.
It was one or the other.
That's what I meant, that's exactly what I meant.
Uh, anybody else with council, council reports? Anything, Tracy? It is nine fifty-five, it's starting at ten o'clock, the six hours is adjourned.
I'm not early.
Yeah.
Always pulling it out right at the end.